Mr. Manning is now called to the board. Will please join Vice Chairman Jerry Langley in a little anticipation of the board's complacency. Please.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for another opportunity to assemble here to do the business of your county. God, we just thank you for life, health, and strength. And Father, touch our hearts and minds this evening that we can agree to disagree, but do so in love. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any commissioner here who wishes to make a disclosure regarding any matter that is before this board tonight? Hearing done, we're moving to the approval of the amended agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. We're down to public comments.
Thank y'all for allowing me to speak this morning or this afternoon. I want to talk about the pandemic that we're all facing a little bit. Our state governor continues to keep places closed down, show them small business continuously, but has allowed big box stores like Walmart to thrive. And I feel like right this minute, we're doing the same thing in Beaufort County or attempting to do so. Little guys continue to suffer and aren't able to open their businesses. But right now, we're, last month, we talked about Republic Services, which is the largest waste container company in the country, and they are thriving. For people like Family Sanitation and David's Trash Services still struggle to meet their budget and conduct services. But in the meeting last month, we talked about changing the Republic Services contract to allow them to do, pick up a trash at roadside. Nothing's been said about redoing the bid. I think this is a new service. And as a new service, a bid should be set out to allow other people to bid on it. If David's Trash Services is cut off from picking up the county trash that they're doing now, they'll probably lose 12 employees. Those are 12 employees that live and work in Beaufort County, spend money in Beaufort County, and I don't think that's right. Currently, we pay $165 a year in trash waste fees. In Washington County, where Republic Services is currently providing service, they pay $275, and it goes up every year. If this tax, if this fee is not paid and it comes on your tax bill, then a link could be taken on your home, and you could lose your home over it. I think what we're attempting to do is to allow Republic to have a monopoly on the trash services in the communities, and that's not right. How about those people living in the municipalities? They also pay the fee of $165. Do they not get to have the same services that other Beaufort County residents have? I don't know. I just think that this whole thing, something's wrong about it. We've already run ads to change the contract. My question is, who authorized the ad? You know, was it the county manager? Was it Katie Duke? Because she was told to do it. I think whoever did it was told to do it, but I want to know who told them to do it because this should have come before the county commissioners and the county commissioners should have asked that ad be run. I just think this whole thing with Republic is wrong. You're trying to push out the little guys and allow them to conduct business as usual, and I'm not in support of it at this time.
Good evening. In one week, we celebrate Labor Day, a day that was set aside to honor people that labor or work for a living. For six months, North Carolina has been closed down. For five months, Beaufort County could have been open if this board had voted on a resolution to approve opening Beaufort County. North Carolina is behind every other state in the Union for opening. Out of 94 million check-ins and gyms across the country, only 1,000 people have tested positive for COVID. That's less than .00001%. I talked with a woman a month ago. She lives in North Carolina, small business owner. She and her husband, they lost their business, they lost their home, and now they live in the car. Is this what we want for our state and our county? Does anybody care about them? I hear people talking about, "I care about people, so I voted to close the county." Do you care about the people who lost their business and their home? The private sector makes money. The government does not make money. They only spend money. Businesses in Bellhaven closed due to the fake pandemic, and now they deal with not being able to open their businesses due to the first hurricane of the season. These businesses need to open for families to survive. If we change the trash pickup service, my understanding is that there could be as many as 50 people in Beaufort County that will lose their job. Small business drives this county. We cannot afford to lose more jobs. It is time to stand behind the small business leader of this community and support them in opening Beaufort County.
Thank you.
Good evening. Been a lot of talk about the COVID and its population control. Y'all know that by Gates in Fuji, and it's part of the Agenda 21 Plan. And Agenda 21 is in Washington now. Nobody wants to talk about it, but it's here. And it's population control. And I was saying, we're, y'all want to build a $50,000 building to vaccinate the locals here from something we've been hiding from for eight months? We've been wearing masks and gloves, and now they want to take the children down there and give them a shot of this stuff. The same guy, Gates, he crippled hundreds of thousands of these little black children with his vaccines. There was nobody there. You know, it was, he found, he found a situation where it was a bunch of black kids, and nobody would really help. And he crippled them, hundreds of thousands of them. And imagine if y'all build that thing. I don't trust a vaccine. I'm not going to take it. And we all take our children to there, and they get a shot, and they went crippled or they started dying in a couple of months down the road. Can you imagine what would happen around here? I mean, they come to town with blood in their eye, and I don't, and I don't think y'all will have the following you think you go get out of the citizens of Beaufort County. A lot of us are anti-vaxxers. We know what's going on, and we're not going to take the vaccine. And I tell you, y'all are really playing with fire, offering to give everybody a shot around here. Y'all really are. And about that Brenna Hamilton thing, we never found out what happened. And we need to put a bounty out on them. Like Frankie lives down there by me, and he's scared to get out of his car, but complaining without solution is just whacking. And we need to put a bounty out on them because they're not going to become non-predators. They're not going to get better. It's just going to get worse, and the kids go get bit down there, and it's not going to be my fault because I came up here and told y'all. And y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. We're down to legislative updates, and I see that we have Representative Kidwell with us, so if you'd like to come on up, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, for the time allotted here this evening. Not really a lot to deliver, as you well know. We've not been in session for quite some time. We will return to session tomorrow. We are hoping to go in and deal with some of the additional COVID monies from the federal government and get those allocated out to the municipalities, counties of education, things of that nature. Those bills are currently in committee. Y'all know as well as I do that that means we really don't know what's going to happen yet, so when they come through, we'll get copies of that information out to you as quickly as possible. I am proud to say I've been appointed to the House Select Committee on the Citizens and Law Enforcement Relationships. We are going to seek to go to the people, to the sheriff's police, and bring them together to make sure that we don't have the types of situations that we're seeing in other parts of this nation right now, to make sure that our police are doing the things they should do and not doing the things that they should not do, and to see if we can sharpen the relationship between the public and the police and law enforcement in this, in this state. One of the things that concerns me is the rioting that we've been seeing going on throughout the country, and now we're seeing some of it up in Raleigh. I would encourage this board to do what it can to dissuade people through the local law enforcement to make sure that we don't have these types of uprising. I'm wholly for protesting. Protesting is appropriate, but the moment that turns violent, the moment we start destroying public property, the moment we start destroying government property or the property of citizens, we're causing injury to said people, it's time for law enforcement to step in and have those people back off of what they're doing. So I encourage this board to do what you can within your power to make sure that doesn't happen in Beaufort County, okay? And with that, I stand for any questions if there are any.
Sam, go ahead.
Is the General Assembly going to discuss the governor not calling you guys back into session when he had the opportunity, and I think purposely did not call you back into session when he took pretty much control of the entire COVID response?
So thank you, Commissioner DeFries, for that question. I'll face the microphone so that I can respond to that appropriately. So what we did do as a General Assembly is submitted a change in the Emergency Powers Act 166 to not have it where the governor is the sole dispensary, if you will, of the emergency powers. Our position in the General Assembly is we are the ones that are elected to represent the people, and it would be wholly appropriate that the General Assembly come back into session in a time that we have a statewide state of emergency. So actually, what I did, a bill that I prepared and submitted, and then that was modified in committees, merged in with another bill, we ended up having a bill that the governor vetoed that would have automatically called the General Assembly back into session upon a statewide declaration of emergency, which would have been 67 or more counties. That way, if we had a hurricane tornado, he can actually still act upon those emergency powers. It would have brought us back into session, required that we vote within 15 days to either concur with the governor or not. If we did not, it would automatically repeal the emergency powers. It would also seek that the governor would be required to have the council of state actually agree with him before he could make a declaration of a statewide emergency. In this case, to my understanding, and the members of the council of state that I've spoken with, which is numerous, they got about 30 minutes notice, and it was an email. So if they weren't sitting there looking at their phone or their computer, they didn't know that that request for emergency powers came out. Governor looked at it and said, "Well, they didn't respond. I'm going to do what I have to do," and that's what's gotten us where we are today, okay? We're going to try to change some laws so that that does not happen again after the election. We're hopeful that we'll be able to make those changes.
Commissioner Waters?
I've had two telephone calls this week concerning DOT and the highway right of ways. We've got grass and weeds that are taller than the biggest pear that I've seen and maybe taller than any of the big deers with horns. And I guess my concern is, is that we still have school buses that are going out in the county picking up special needs. I'm assuming that's what they're picking up. And I'll be quite honest with you, there's two stop signs that I stop at every day, and I almost have to get out into the other lane to be able to look. And I understand that there's a cash flow crunch at DOT, but I sure think it's really dangerous for us not to be able to go out there, at least in some of the areas where there's some potential hazards.
And thank you for that, Commissioner Waters. We at the General Assembly agree with your assessment that DOT has not done the things that need to be done. As you well know, DOT, we now have had two situations where we found that they were either mismanaging or misappropriating funds. That has been brought to our knowledge at this time under control. We've put in some oversight to make sure that that cannot happen again. One of the things we saw is that there was, I don't remember the exact number, we're talking millions of dollars in raises that were given out inappropriately. They were allowed to do about a 2% raise, and we had some of the DOT employees, as a matter of fact, a good majority of the DOT employees got about a 10% raise where they were not supposed to. There was also some question in how they had allocated and handled about $330 million of money. So twice in the last 10 months, we've had to step up and bail out DOT. Right now, they're playing catch-up. We have funded them. We've gotten them the money they need. Now they've got to get out there and do all the stuff that they should have been doing. If there are some particular locations, I believe you have my email. If you will email those areas of concern, I'll get up with the district director on that and make sure that those are addressed as quickly as possible.
Anyone else? I could curl that down at Seateck Road when you get to, I mean, literally, it's up above the stop sign, so it's getting kind of dangerous. Anyone else?
I have a question. Nobody else has?
Okay, Commissioner.
Could we speak to the absentee voting, new regulations that have been changed where it takes one signatory instead of two as a witness? And will the General Assembly continue to perform oversight over the Board of Elections to make sure that we don't fall into the same category as this universal mass mailing, that where ballots can be used as currency?
Again, if you don't mind, Commissioner, I'll share with my phone. Thank you, Commissioner DeFries, for that question. So a couple of things on that. One is, clearly, the General Assembly is concerned about the security of our voting system. It is the foundation of our republic. We need to make sure that that is protected as you would protect a small child. So what we've done with that, and actually, the governor has signed off on it, North Carolina will not have mail-in ballots, okay? So what that is, when we talk about mail-in ballots and absentee ballots, realize that's two totally different animals we're dealing with. Mail-in ballot, the Board of Elections just mails out a bunch of ballots to whomever's on the election rolls, and those ballots are delivered to those last known addresses, and then whoever gets that can fill it out and send it back in to the Board of Elections. That's mailing. We will not be doing that. The law that was just passed this year says, "No, we won't." The governor did sign that bill. What we will have is absentee ballots. As Commissioner DeFries alluded to, we've made some changes to the way those happen. On the old absentee ballots, the witness signature really just could be a mark. Literally, they could make their X, and we would have two witnesses that could have just made an X, okay? No way to verify who actually made those signatures if their signature was not legible. So the law that was passed, that was part of the election bill, would require that there be one signatory, but that person would have to have a legible signature, print their name, and affix an address to it as well, so that that way we can actually go back and verify who it is that witnessed that ballot. So it is, in fact, Commissioner DeFries, a step up in the security because now we have a verifiable person to return to to make sure that they did, in fact, witness that signature and that they're, in fact, a person that exists in the state of North Carolina.
Can I do a follow-up on that one? In your law, does it specify any, whether it would be a felony or a misdemeanor to actually be a false signatory or if you were to do a ballot harvest, a ballot?
And again, that's one, clearly, the ballot harvesting was an issue that we faced in North Carolina. And if I'm not mistaken, on all of these, I would really want to go back and read the bill, but I believe on these situations, you're talking about ballot harvesting, falsifying ballots, those types of things, all of those have been made, I believe it was Class I felonies, so that it will not be a misdemeanor, it will be a felony.
So if somebody voted more than once, they could go?
They can actually be charged and put in prison, yes.
Okay, great.
Now, our concern with that is going to be, and this is something we would want to make sure it does happen, many elected officials today are in the mind of thought that they can choose which laws they're going to enforce and not. We have seen district attorneys in the state of North Carolina where cases were brought before them with either fraudulent ballots or somebody who voted twice, things of that nature, and those district attorneys have chosen to not prosecute. Here again, guys, all of us have taken an oath, and all of them have taken an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, and I would highly recommend that we, in the positions of authority and responsibility and trust, make sure that whenever possible, if we have a district attorney that's not prosecuting appropriately, we should do what we can to make sure that that does not happen and that that district attorney do their job.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for the update. We're down to item G, a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull out page 20 for some discussion.
Say it again.
I'd like, oh. I'd like to pull out page 20 for discussion. Page 20 has to do with the sheriff's office, and it looks like awarding money.
Okay, I don't see 20. You're talking about item 11, or?
Well, it's item 11, but the only thing that I'm concerned with in item 11 is what's on page 20.
Okay. Okay, we have, we'll move that down to, let me, let's move that down to item N, number two.
Chairman, if I may, that might be best taken up when the chief deputy is here because he would be the one to answer questions on that.
That's under him. Is a motion to approve the amendment to the amended consent items?
Yes, sir.
Is there? Second?
That does not require a motion.
Okay. He's just making a change, okay. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. Six one.
Six one.
Okay, we're down to item H. Jim Mattson? Madison? Mattson?
Yes, I'm Mattson.
Where is Jim? He's coming.
He's black.
Hey. All right, gentlemen. All right, so I'm going to give you all a quick update for the COVID-19 in Beaufort County mostly. So comparing North Carolina numbers, we're at 169,000 confirmed, 2,741 deaths, 946 hospitalized and a little over 2 million that they've tested. Comparing that with Beaufort County, where we have, as of today, 698 confirmed cases. 172 of those cases are active. The rest of them have recovered, 526. We've had nine deaths so far, and we, right now, we have seven that are in the hospitalized, and we are investigating three outbreaks within the county. You want me to start all over?
No. No, I don't.
So we're good now? So to show you some of the statewide numbers, the red line shows the number of COVID-like illness that have gone to the emergency departments throughout the state, and so they track of all the cases that come through the emergency department, how many of them have the COVID-like illness. And you can see that we're at about 4% now, which is down from where it was 6% or so at the peak, and that is a good thing to see right there. For those that are getting admitted to the hospital, the blue bar shows a percent of those per week that are being put into the ICU. And the percentage of that would be that orange line, so we're at about 25% of people that get put into the hospital end up going into the ICU. Statewide numbers. This shows the statewide, or, yeah, statewide surveillance data where they actually test people that have COVID-like illness or flu-like illness, any of those respiratory illnesses, and they do a whole panel of different type of viruses that could cause that kind of illness, and this shows the type of virus that it was, and the dark blue is COVID-19. The next highest one is the yellow one, which is the rhinovirus. It's been detected at that lower, but just to show you how they do every virus. Here we have the statewide reporting for the number of hospitalizations. So today, 946 hospitalized, and that's out of 92 hospitals that are reporting data. The bottom number shows the number per day. So that number per day is 366 for today, and it's been staying at that 300 to 400 level. And what this means then is that the average stay statewide seems to be about two or three days long in the hospital. That's the average stay. Obviously, some people are there much longer, some shorter. Looking at Beaufort County, well, actually, eastern North Carolina, this is not just Beaufort County, but there's like 30 counties that are in this data, us being one of them. You can see that the number hospitalized in this area is 129, and we're getting about 20 per day. So that means that our stay is longer when we go in. This is about 6.5 days on average for people, which means that we probably are having more serious cases when they get hospitalized, so they have to stay in the hospital longer, or we're just not putting people in the hospital who are not very sick. So it could be either one of those two things. The bottom graph, it shows you the number of ventilators that are available in these counties, and then dark blue represents how many of them are in use. So we're, what's that, about 25, 30% of them are being used and the rest are still available if we needed them. The Vinted Region, so this is all the Vinted Hospitals showing the number of people, the blue line, light blue line, showing the number of people that have been put in the hospital ever since May 23rd, excuse me, March 23rd. And then the black line, the next one down, is the number of people that are in ICU at any one day, and then the lower gray color, which for today is 10, people that are on So how do we compare with some of the counties around us? This measures, I'm sorry. So this shows you how we compare to other counties, and throughout the whole pandemic, we've had 124 for every 10,000 people that are in the county that have come up positive. And that compares to Hyde County, that's 184, Pitt County, 196. You can see that Craven County is at 94, Deere County is the lowest at 67, and then you can see it's pretty high. is at 94, Deere County is the lowest at 67, and then you can see it's pretty high in Tarrell County at 259, and Dupe County remains our biggest, or hardest, heaviest impacted one at 354 for every 10,000 residents. So it just, it means that we've not been impacted as much as some of the counties around us, as far as case numbers go. So this graph shows the number of cases at the top per day, so that's our timeline, our EPI curve, that shows actual case counts for the day. The bottom one shows the same data, but for some people it's a little bit easier to read, but it takes a seven-day average, so that makes a nicer little curve for you to follow. And what you can see is, back in July, we had that peak, and a lot of, a lot of us are knowing that happened, and last time I came here to present to y'all, we had started on that downward trend, but since that time period, you can see that we've been increasing again, so right now, we are about at the same level as far as number of cases as we were back in July. I think one of the differences is that we do a lot of testing right now, so some of that is not just from the number of cases that are, not necessarily reflecting an outbreak occurring, but the fact that we're doing so much testing, we may be artificially making it look that way, so it's hard for me to compare, but I do call it a downward trajectory, because there's more people that are coming in to get tested, and some of them think they, you know, need to be tested. So, and then later on, I'll show you some of the test numbers. This is a very similar EPI curve, but what I've done is just tracked out the number of active cases, so you can see how many active cases we've had at any one time in the county. Of course, you see the same second hump in there, but the high was about 175 cases at any one, on any one day, and that represents, I think, about four out of every thousand residents in our county. This number is breaking out the cases for the whole pandemic for, by zip code. Now, you know, I recorded it as a municipality, but there's a lot of people that live outside of the municipality that has a zip code, so it's really the zip code that we're looking at in this case, and it's also hard for me to tell you whether that zip code may not include people outside the county, you know, because you could do, like Edward, around there, you have some people that actually live in Kamlico County, but it's not too many, that does give you kind of an idea of where the outbreaks are occurring, or where the impact has been the most. This is the same information, but I've restricted it to two weeks' worth of data, so you can see what the hotspot is today versus the whole pandemic, so you can see that right now, Bath, Pintown, and Washington are three biggest hit areas as far as per population And the dark one at the bottom is Beaufort County as a whole. So this data is showing you, out of all the positive cases that we've had, the number, the orange-colored one shows that 22% of the positives did not have any symptoms at all, and then the green one shows that of all the positive, positives that we've had, 54% of those are known contact of somebody, so they knew that you were a contact, and who they had come in contact with, so where they got the virus from, and that means the 46% are community-acquired, not sure where they got it from. And our contact tracing is really bringing in that 54%, because when we identify people as contacts, they come in, they get tested, and so a lot of them, higher percentage of them are going to be positive. So speaking of tests, you can see now, the test numbers for the last two weeks, we've gone over 1,800 tests, or before, we were getting about 1,000 tests per week, so we really have ramped up a lot of tests in the county. The state is asking us to do 5%, I think we're hitting about 11 or 12%, so we're doing very well for the testing numbers. But of course, with more testing comes more positives, the good thing is, is that the test results that are coming back positive for those being tested is down to 5.2%, so that's a good thing, so that's kind of why I'm, I'm saying that our numbers going up is probably based more off the testing than it is an outbreak occurring. All these numbers, though, you got to bear in mind, there's a lot of people that don't come in to get tested, that have the COVID, you know, they just don't come in to get tested, so I can only reflect on what cases we are showing. We are still doing outreach testing, and when we do outreach testing, we are getting a lot of community testing as well, but the goal of this is to hit some of the more vulnerable populations, and to, you know, make sure they have access to the testing ability, and then, so we're hitting about 100 every time we go out and do a test, and we're seeing about 3 to 5% of them come back as positive. Now, they all went to that test site probably for a reason, so I don't think it's necessarily a reflection of the whole community, you know, most, a lot of the people go there because they were contacts, or because they feel like they have been at risk. So just some other information on COVID to keep you up to date, last month, y'all talked to, voted to fund the annex, putting behind the health department, and so that ground has been broken, and what we've done is dug out some of the dirt and filled it with sand so we can lay a foundation, we plan on putting a foundation in, and, not next week, but the week after, and then as soon as that dries, we'll be able to put the steel structure on top of that, so we're hoping to have it all up by 1st of October. The state is coming out with a, an app, and it's not, I looked for it earlier today, I couldn't find it yet, but it's supposed to be coming out real soon, so you download this app, and you activate it, and then whenever you are near somebody that also has the activated app, it kind of judges the amount of time and the distance that you're away from each other, and if you are close, you know, within six feet for 15 minutes or longer, and one of those people comes up positive, it'll notify the other person that they've been a possible contact, and so that allows them to call the health department and be tested, treated as a contact, just as though they were identified by somebody through the contact tracing process. So y'all hear more about that, I heard about it today for the first time, so y'all getting this fresh off the press, and the official name for that app is Slow COVID NC. So we are beginning to plan for vaccination, about, it's probably been about two weeks ago now, I got my first notification that we would be doing some vaccination, and I did get put on a state plan committee, so I'm getting some of the more information now that I can share. We expect to start having vaccines show up around November timeframe. It'll probably be pretty limited at first, so what our strategy will be, or what we're told it will be, is for us to hit the healthcare workers, and the long-term care facilities, the nursing homes, and those areas that are more vulnerable, and then the next group will be probably elderly, and those that have underlying health conditions, and then lastly, we get a big bulk of it, and that would be for anybody in the community that wants it. So I'm guessing November to March timeframe, all that will occur. That's what, that's what I'm being told, so we'll see. So we are working on that plan. And then lastly, just let y'all know that the, we updated our website to include a link that goes to some surveillance data, so most of the stuff that I've been putting out through the daily report is now going to be available on there for you to, anybody that wants to look at it, and I kind of update it daily, even though some of the information is only given to me weekly, so it's there for people to use, so that's all I have on that.
Questions for Jim? Commissioner Waters?
The, the numbers that you're reporting in Beaufort County, and I guess statewide, are they all tied back to a zip code? For example, the Pantica address goes over into the grassy ridge area of Hyde County, which is a concentration of Mennonite families, and they have experienced an outbreak there. Does that, those tests, because of the zip code being 27860, is that showing up under Beaufort County, or does it get cleaned up when somebody has to ask what county do you actually live in?
The, it does get cleared up, and oftentimes, we will get one from Hyde County, and we end up passing it over to Hyde County through the NC Ed system, so all the graphs, it would not reflect those, except for that one that's broken out by zip code, that would reflect that, because that one is divided by zip code, not by county.
The other question I've got, what, what is more accurate, you know, of the tests that are right there, is, is the blood sample, does that create the best results, or is it the swab up your nose?
The swab is, the swab is the one that has better sensitivity and specificity. The antigen test, which is the blood test that you're talking about, is, is a little bit less sensitive and less, it's pretty sensitive, but it's very low specificity, so it's got a lot of false negatives that come with it, so the, you should only use those, in my opinion, and from the, also, you know, looking at from study of sensitivity and specificity, those kind of studies are better used if you're in a outbreak that's occurring, versus just a general point-of-care kind of test, so I, I mean, I would recommend more of the PCR testing versus the antigen testing. Now, the antibody testing is a different test altogether.
Okay, you want to move over to Health Nurse Three?
That's on the nurse, right, so I, I got the resignation of one of my nurses, she's going to move on to a management position outside of the health department, and under the circumstances that we're in right now, I really need to get that position filled so that I can continue to do the service that we're trying to provide. Now, she is the, she's over two programs that is not necessarily COVID-related, but she still is spending about 10% of her time doing the contact tracing parts, and if, if I don't fill that position, I'm going to have to have one of my other nurses that is concentrating on COVID over there trying to do her program stuff, so that's going to be, this is, needless to say, I'm begging y'all not to.
Motion to approve. Second. Second, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, Jim.
Yes.
Before you leave, how are you looking on mosquito spraying?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on that. We only got about 20.
Hey, we're spraying the heck out of your area tonight, I can tell you that.
They're hitting Maxwell tonight.
They're hitting your area tonight, is that good enough?
Helps. Did you hit anybody else's area?
We're down to item, uh, committee's commission, Kevin Richards.
That ain't Kevin.
You don't look like Kevin.
No. Well, Kevin has hurt his knee, unfortunately, and can hardly walk.
I can sympathize with you.
I just took it off. You want me to wear it while I speak? No.
You know, we always have, that's why I'm there.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
You realize whether it's mustache or, it's not as effective.
Oh, okay.
That's for, that's.
I'll work it there.
Yeah, but he's got double air. He's got double air.
Double air.
Okay, um, so.
Yeah.
This is, would you want to call a public hearing?
Need a motion going to public hearing?
So moved. That's second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone?
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is the first of two public hearings that are required for the Community Development Block Grants, or CDBG funds, is just to explain the different types of CDBG programs, and solicit input from the county and its residents. The second public hearing will be at your October meeting, and will be Project Pacific. There are a number of different types of funds available through the North Carolina Community Development Block Grant Program. Number one, Community Development Block Grant Program for Economic Development is administered by the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division, and provides grants to local governments that partner with a for-profit business to bring infrastructure improvements and building renovation services. Number two is Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization, that provides funding for rehabilitation, acquisition, clearance, relocation, substantial rehabilitation, replacement housing, and emergency repairs for low-to-moderate income residents. Number three, Community Development Block Grant, the demolition grants, are designed to demolish vacant, dilapidated industrial buildings and properties under the elimination of slums and blight objective, to help create new jobs and private sector investment. Number four is Downtown Redevelopment Fund, is designed for infrastructure upgrades of downtown buildings in order to meet current code requirements. The upgrades should be for vacant or underutilized downtown commercial buildings, and underutilized building is defined as the property that is less than fully utilized or used below its potential. The fund is designed to return vacant or underutilized commercial buildings to economic use for new and/or expanded business. The goal of the fund is the prevention or elimination of urban blight. Number five, Community Development Block Grant, infrastructure grants for public water and wastewater infrastructure. CDBG infrastructure funds are administered by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. The NC Department of Water Infrastructure provides funding for projects that improve water quality. CDBG infrastructure grants are also intended to improve the life of low-to-moderate income people. Number six, Community Development Block Grant, disaster recovery grants are administered by the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resilience, and are used to help cities, counties, and states, states, and state, I assume, recover from presidential declared disasters, especially in low, moderate-income areas. There is a new CDBG grant that just came out today, and it is for the recovery from COVID-19, and the funds are to help local governments respond to health and economic impacts of COVID-19 by supporting public service, public facilities, and special economic development activities. Those are the different types of, of Community Development Block Grants. Any comments?
Motion to close.
Do we have? Our second. If anyone in the public would like to speak, please come forward. Motion to oppose. Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, we have a quick call.
Well, I have a question before Martin leaves.
Okay.
Which one of those categories do we intend to apply for?
Yeah. Can I ask you a question? You stand there if you want. Recycling, a regional recycling collection center, is that possible, something that your group could do, help with, funds, grant money?
There is some money in the Department of Environment for recycling, yeah, it should, I believe the deadline is October.
October 20?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's going to be some federal money probably available, the problem that has befallen us in Beaufort County, has befallen the entire United States, so I think this is going to be a job creator.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if, I mean, you're here now, I've got it on the docket later, but if you're not going to be here, could I just ask?
I've got another tender item, but, yeah, sorry, please.
I was just wondering if this is something that you could aid in, your group?
Yeah, I believe we could investigate it, and see what we could.
I don't know if this would wind up in Beaufort County, but it would be regional.
Sure, okay.
I guess whichever area is best suited, because it is going to be a travel thing, travel system.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I'll investigate it.
Thanks. Get back with it. You know how to find me.
We're under item, uh, the Mid East Commission?
The Bicycle Plan, Jamie here.
Okay, yeah.
She is there. I hear somebody in the background.
Yeah. I know that phone.
I'm not seeing my PowerPoint presentation, but y'all should have a copy of it in your, um, packet, sir. So you recall that at last month's meeting, we did have a public hearing for the, um, Beaufort County Comprehensive Bicycle Plan, and we did accept, uh, comments on the draft plan for 30 days prior to that hearing as well. Um, and we did, um, have another steering committee meeting to review those public comments and made some updates to the plan. And those updates were endorsed by the Bicycle Plan Steering Committee on August 18th. So I'd like to just briefly redo, review those, um, updates with you and then, um, have a discussion, um, if y'all would like, and then ask you to vote on adoption of the draft Beaufort County Comprehensive Bicycle Plan. Right, so, um, new projects that we added to the plan on Turkey Trot 2 Road, Black Road, and Neck Road. We added bicycle lanes in those, in the county jurisdiction. In Bath, we added an intersection project at South Main Street and NC 92, which is named Carteret Street in Bath. In Washington, on Sixth Street and Seventh Street, between Bridge Street and Market Streets, we added bicycle boulevards. On Holloman Street, we added a share row project. On Hodges Avenue, from Highlands to US 264, John Small Avenue, we added bicycle lanes. Intersection projects in Washington, Market Street and Ninth, Market and Eleventh, and Market and Thirteenth, we added intersection projects. Changes to existing projects, in Bell Haven, we changed Main Street, Railroad Street, Pantego Street, and Riverview Street from share row to bicycle boulevard. In Washington, we changed, um, Avon Avenue and Cowell Farm Road from share row to bicycle lanes. We changed Northwood Road and Reed Drive from share row to bicycle lanes. Pennsylvania Avenue, we changed from share row to bicycle lanes and extended that project to connect with the proposed Runyon Creek Greenway. US 17 Business, Bridge Street, and Carolina Avenue, we changed from buffered bicycle lanes to separated bicycle lanes. In Washington, all of the following roads were changed from share rows to bicycle boulevards. 11th Street, Bonner Street, Van Norden Street, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Second Street, uh, the downtown portion of Market Street, and Brown Street. And then, I apologize that this is not on the screen for everyone's benefits, but the commissioners will have, uh, copies of the maps in your packet. And I won't have time to go into all the individual projects, so hopefully you have had ti- the time to look at that on your own, but you'll see the, um, shared use path projects in blue, separated bicycle lane projects in yellow, buffered bicycle lanes purple, bicycle lanes orange, bicycle boulevards brown, share rows red, and the greenways in green. And then the intersection projects are red dots, and then the bridge deck enhancement project is the yellow dot. So the first map y'all have there is the county map. And then the Aurora Inset. The Bath Inset. We have Bell Haven. Chalkalinity. Pantego. And then Washington. Um, other changes, there were no changes to the recommended bicycle programs and policies. Some of these changes are minor, but, um, I'll go through them quickly. We added an action step regarding bicycle racks and parking. Um, that was already a program recommendation, but we just added an action step to the implementation chapter. We added an action step regarding participation in the Watch For Me NC Program, um, which includes bicyclist and motorists education, public outreach, and a bicycle-friendly community branding program. Um, and again, that was already a program recommendation, but we just add an action step on that to the implementation chapter. We made a couple of additions and corrections to the destinations list. We added information on STIP, or State Transportation Improvement Program, funded projects to the Bicycle Project Recommendations Table where that's applicable. And we also included a table of STIP-funded projects as an appendix. Um, we added a notation on the project recommendation table that speed limits would need to be reduced from 35 to 25 to implement shared lane projects on three project recommendations, which would be Bonner Street, 11th Street, and Holloman Street in Washington. One of those is a short connector, the other two were, um, where the city actually submitted comments that they'd like bicycle boulevards there. Um, and the DOT actually add, asked us to add this statement in, um, so it would work with their safety regs. So I'm not saying that those speed limits should be reduced, just saying if they want the same, the shared lane project, they would need to reduce the speed limit. If not, they could do bicycle lane, um, instead of the bike boulevard. Um, we added Mid East RPO to key partners list on the acknowledgements page. We added more information on local utility cyclists, uh, meaning those who rely on bicycles for their transportation to the executive summary. We added additional information on the proposed Shared Use Path Project to the Priority Project Cut Sheet for the Bridge Deck Enhancement on US 17 Business. Um, so no changes to that project, we just added more details to the Priority Project Cut Sheet. We added additional information on the economic impacts of bicycling. We changed the photo of the wave-type bicycle rack. Um, the current photo, or the, uh, previous photo had showed the rack installed too close to the building, so we changed that photo. We added additional information on the design of bicycle boulevards as an appendix. Um, and that, those are the only changes to the, um, plan as you had, uh, previously seen it. Um, so if there's any, uh, questions or comments before you vote to adopt, I'll be glad to address those.
Martin?
Um, yeah. Um, what is our commitment, 10% or 20%, if I can't remember?
If you, um, submit projects and they're successfully funded, it would be 20. The RPOs are advocating to try to have that match requirement lowered for tier-one counties, but, um, you're not committing yourself to anything by adopting the plan. You would actually have to submit those projects through the RPO, and then they would have to be successfully funded.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, uh, if we found other people that could chip in some of the 20, that would probably work as well, like cities?
Correct.
Okay. Let's see how much people want to do something. Or develop, or even?
Yes.
Yeah.
Anywhere the match comes from that's not state or federal.
Okay. Very well.
Jamie, is there a part of the NC DOT's policy on complete streets? That if that program, that, if that bicycle plan is a part of the design, then it's funded by the DOT?
Yes, we did try to take advantage of the new complete streets policy that DOT adopted in, uh, just last year in 2019. So that basically says that if there's an improvement project on a state road, it does have to be an improvement project, not like routine maintenance, like paving or something, but if there's an improvement project on that road and there is a project in an adopted bicycle or pedestrian plan, then DOT has to include that project at no cost match to the local government. So we did try to take advantage of that new policy as well. Um, since it's a brand-new policy, we don't know exactly how it's going to play out, but we tried, did try to take advantage of that. Maybe some of those projects you'll actually get without having to pay a match, hopefully.
Hmm, good.
Any more questions for Jamie? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. All of those opposed? Six, one. Thank you, Jamie. And Brian, you said Ann is not here.
Yes, Chairman, I'm down.
Yeah?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, Ann is not here tonight, so I will handle that item for her. Um, it is on page 225. This is a grant award contract and budget project ordinance for a, an additional North Carolina Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund Grant. Um, you'll recall that she brought one of these to you previously. It is a North Carolina grant piece. It is included with the USDA piece. There is some mats that is, that comes from in-kind work that her office does. Um, actually, previously in your consent agenda item, you reversed one of them. If you'll recall, she came to you and said, on that original one, that the two grants were tied together, and if one grant didn't go through, then they weren't gonna move forward with the other one. The, the USDA money did not come through, and the, the folks on that grant decided they didn't want to do it. So in your consent agenda item, you reversed that. Um, this is a similar project. Um, it is a, it's in the amount of $98,424. The total of the project, including, uh, the grant amount, the matching funds, and the USDA piece, is 34128. Uh, it would set up a, uh, permanent, a perpetual conservation easement on the family's working farm of approximately 355 acres. Um, the, uh, the Soil and Water Board has approved participation in the project and is asking for the Board of Commissioners' support. What this would do, uh, is, is have your support to move forward with that, and then we would probably bring you at the next meeting, uh, a budget ordinance, a project ordinance relating to how, how all that works out. Uh, we decided to wait this time until we could find out whether USDA funding would come about, because last time we went ahead and did the project ordinance and the USDA funding didn't come through, so we had to have you back it back out. So that is what she is requesting, and, uh, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, John?
Brian, as I read through this, and I'm really not that familiar with this process, but it almost sounds like there is a sale taking place. Right?
The owner is receiving compensation for a perpetual.
Okay, and that gets transferred to the state or the county?
There, there's a perpetual easement that goes on that property, so it stays in perpetuity.
But it, but that easement is then, belongs to the county or the state?
Well, it, it is, um, I don't know that it necessarily belongs either one of them, it's in the system.
There's a bill of sale.
Right.
In here.
For, for that, for that perpetual easement, and, and it runs with the land, so it can never go away, and it's recorded in the deed.
But the sale is for, I don't know.
For that, for that easement.
Yeah.
For that perpetual easement, that's how they show that they're providing that grant money to the landowner.
But it's almost $300,000 is the, is that. What happens to the taxes on that property?
The taxes on the property for the farm, it would stay the same.
Oh, the easement.
Um, it would be, it would be the same. It is a, um, it, it would keep it in, uh, present use value, um, so it would never come out of present use value. Um, because what happens is when a piece of farmland comes out of present use, that you go back and recapture, um, whatever those deferred taxes were. So with it being a perpetual easement, my understanding would stay in present use value, cause it would, it would always be farm.
Commissioner Richardson?
Well, uh, you know, I'm not gonna vote for this. I stopped voting for these things a long time ago, cause I don't think we're doing property owners a favor when we put a perpetual easement on their property that limits development. If the county ever wanted to build a road or, or to the progress in the use of the property, uh, it's, it's, we're not doing them a favor, so I stopped voting for these things a long time ago.
Yeah, that, that does bear your question.
Commissioner's discretion.
Would this supersede the taking clause in the Fifth Amendment?
It's not taking, they're, they're.
I'm hoping, would this supersede, say, if, if there wasn't need to take?
The feds could still take it under the Constitution.
They, the feds could stake it, but could the state?
County could.
County and state could not.
I couldn't answer that question, you have to refer to the county attorney on that.
I don't know the answer, but.
Brian, to, to answer that question, I've, I've been involved in two different training programs on these easements. What I understand is that in the planning process that DOT does, is that this farm will be highlighted, so as they start the initial planning, it'll be spotted and they'll see it. You know, it won't be something they discover at the last minute. Um, I mean, it's basically, you're, you're selling the development rights so that it no longer can be developed. It's always got to stay in timberland and farmland. And if you do the math, it, it ended up being $956 an acre. And ballpark figure is roughly a thousand. Uh, but it does keep it from being developed into a subdivision.
Commissioner Ward, uh, it's my understanding, and I think Ann made that presentation and talked about it to the board before, this has been a, um, uh, a goal of Secretary, of Commissioner Troxler with the state to try to do more farmland preservation, um, because of farmland going away in North Carolina, being developed, and not having that. And, and it's my understanding that, that's part of his platform to try to do more of that, and, and is reaching out to, to do these things. I think she made that presentation at one time and talked about his efforts to do that.
Commissioner Richardson?
Well, Commissioner Troxler has a reputation of being a very liberal individual, and he has pushed this thing from day one. And he's not doing farmers a favor when you take the value of their property for future generations and deny the public the use of the property. If Commissioner Troxler wanted to do something to help farmers and to keep farmland out, not necessarily to help farmers, but to keep far, uh, prime farmland in use, he would have been up screaming about the solar farms that have been put up and have eaten up thousands and thousands of acres of prime farmland. That's why this, this whole program, in my mind, is a really bad idea for the public, because we're taking our tax money and we're buying property and denying ourselves the use of it. This is a, really a dumb idea when you stop and think about it.
Commissioner, please.
This, this is nothing that you cram it on a, a land on. This is voluntary basis, if they want to put their property in this program, it's their property.
This is a willing transaction by a property owner who asked for this. It's their property, they asked that it be put in a perpetual easement for farmland, so it would not, so it would always be a farm.
Commissioner.
Well, it's just, just a shorty, but it's our money.
Time to vote. All of those in favor? Please raise your right hand. All of those opposed? High two, motion passes. We're down to item for decision under Department of Social Services, Ms. Kelly.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here tonight with a request from the Department of Social Services to abolish two vacant positions and increase the salary of our administrative officer, too. Since the hiring freeze in April, we've had one processing assistant for and one accounting clerk for vacated in our admin and fiscal units. Over the last 10 years, our systems have improved and technology has become much more automated, especially with the implementation of Northwood, which is our document management system that you all so graciously allowed us to have. And NCFAST, although it is flawed in many ways, it has automated some of our processes and improved, you know, some of our tasks. Our management team, we've met several times to review the workload of our current administrative staff, and after much review and consideration, we feel that we can realign some duties among our existing administrative staff and shift the more complex duties to our administrative officer, too. This would allow for the abolishment of these two vacant positions. So we are requesting tonight that the administrative officer be compensated for the responsibility of the more complex duties by adjusting the salary to the mid-range of the Beaufort County Salary Plan. The administrative officer is responsible for reporting that results in state and federal reimbursements to DSS of approximately $600,000 to $800,000 a month. This position requires a vast knowledge of DSS administrative tasks and must possess a high level of skill. This is an exempt position and often works beyond the 40 hours each week. This is an exempt position and often works beyond the 40 hours each week. With the abolishment of these two positions and the salary increase, there will be a reduction in our budget of $74,132. Since administrative positions are reimbursed at approximately 50%, that would be a savings in county dollars of $37,066. The savings would be realized for this fiscal year as well as fiscal years to come.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Discussion? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Zero, motion passes.
I just want to say one thing. Thank you for presenting that. The way that you presented it, it was presented in a very understandable form. Thank you.
Item 11 for decision, Board of Elections, Ms. Kelly Hopkins.
This is odd to be right here. I feel bad having my back to y'all.
We can see you on TV, Kelly.
Okay. So before I get started, I did want to give the Commissioners a little update on what's going on over at the Board of Elections. We are preparing for the presidential election on November 3, and it's all over the place. But in regards to COVID, the state has done a really great job of acquiring PPE for our office. It looks like we're going to get 24,000 masks, which is 70% turnout, 2,750 pairs of gloves, 350 face shields for our precinct officials, 462 disinfectant sprays, 200 tubs of disinfecting wipes, and 60 gallons of hand sanitizer. So in addition to that, with the CARES Act, there was money in the CARES Act for elections, and Beaufort County's part of that ends up being $90,000 or a little over $90,000. That is to be used on one-stop and preparing for COVID. What we've done in the office is we've extended our one-stop site times, and that money will cover that and will cover any employment or personnel issues that we have. There is another grant that's tied to this, which is a HAVA Grant or the Help America Vote Act. County manager, Ally Good, and myself have discussed it, and I've talked with my board today. We are going to try, there's a minimum of $10,000 and up to $250,000. We are going to try to get as much as we can to help with purchasing a new voting system for the county. So we're looking at that and hoping that it comes through. As of today, we have had 2,023 ballot requests for mail-out ballots, and I did not know, but North Carolina is the first state that actually starts sending out ballots. So we will start that on Friday. We'll be mailing out requested absentees. There's a lot going around about mail-outs in North Carolina. It is voter-initiated. They must request one and fill out a form and properly fill that form out for us to mail one. So they'll go out on Friday. Also, today, the state implemented an online portal for absentee requests, so people will be able to go into that safely and request an absentee ballot. It keeps track of IPs. This was part of the law that the legislature put into effect to combat absentee fraud. In addition to that online portal, we're also adding a program called Ballot Trax, which is actually going to provide voters with a tracking number for their ballot. So they'll be able to log in, see that we got their request, and then see where it is in the process. So I'm very excited about seeing that. One of the big things that we're having trouble with, though, is poll workers. And what I sent to y'all in your packet was that 90, over 90% of our poll workers are over the age of 60. So we've done some calling around, and it's looking anywhere from 25% to 30% of our poll workers are telling us that they're not going to work this year. It's not that they don't want to work, they're just with the COVID issue at hand, they have decided that they shouldn't. So we're trying to open up a pool of voters that we could use as poll workers, and we're trying to be creative about it. The state has launched an online program called Democracy Heroes. We have got about 30 names from that. But one of the things that the counties have been talking about is asking the county commissioners if we could use county employees as a pool for poll workers. So what we would, what we would request from you is to allow those employees to take a day of vacation for their position within the county and then work on Election Day for us, and we pay them the contract price that we do for poll workers. It's anywhere from $225 to $150 they're paid for the day, and it's a contracted price. So we're thinking that county employees will be very technologically smart, so we're excited about that, if y'all will approve it. Do you have any questions about it?
Question? Stan?
Yeah, I'm going to ask you a few questions.
Okay.
If we, if county employees do elect to become part of that, we can approve that they have the right to be a part of that. Would you seek out younger employees or?
It would be, we don't have any kind of criteria for them, other than 18 and being a registered voter. And this also, in North Carolina, poll workers are recommended to us by the parties. So as employees would give us their name, saying they were interested in it, we would then, in turn, send them to the parties for their approval, and then we would appoint them from there.
Okay. How about children, kids in high school?
There is a law that the legislature enacted about 10 years ago that lets 17-year-olds work in the precinct, but they've got to be 17, at least 17, and in school. So we're going to try to get it with the school system, because I'm not sure how they'll, they have to have their parents' approval and also the principal's. So I don't know if we can mail those to them or what.
How much would they make an hour?
We don't pay by the hour, we pay by the day, and the minimum they are paid is $150.
So employees would get a little bit extra?
Seventy years.
Employees would get a little bit extra?
Yes. That's the point of asking for the vacation day. So what they would work from us would be extra to them and help them.
And they get paid for vacation.
Yes.
Kelly, could you come up beside a podium so you'd be a little closer to the mic?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I'm good. Thank you, Kelly.
Are the rates set by the state or the county?
They're set by the county. We used to pay by the hour, but we figured out people were taking their time and milking the hourly rate, so we ended up going to a contract price, where if this is the job you do, this is how much you're going to get paid.
Well, how long is a day?
They have to get the polls by 6:00 in the morning. Polls open at 6:30, and then they close at 7:30, and they have to do cleanup work.
That's a day.
Fabulation, so it's usually till about 9:00.
It's a long day.
It is a very long day.
I make a motion to approve it. Is there a second?
Second, second motion.
Is it any discussion? Hearing done. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes.
Thank you.
We're going to take a short break. Hi, Kelly. We're back in session.
I tell you to be a so-called expert, I'm surprised.
Okay, we're down to item N, public hearing on economic development. Martin.
Thank you. We need to go into closed session for a public hearing. Oh, sorry, a public hearing, not a closed.
Your motion, do you want to? Yes, second. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Public hearing, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners. This public hearing is another one in the saga of Project River Breeze, which we've, because of COVID, the project has kind of changed over the years, seems like years to me, over the months. And as we've spoken before, this is an expansion of a manufacturing company into a new air purification product line using light assembly techniques. The company currently has plans to locate a facility in an out-of-state location or in Beaufort County, North Carolina. The one NC grant is designed for North Carolina to compete with the out-of-state location and to assist Project River Breeze in startup of their new manufacturing system. The Project River Breeze will now invest $600,000 to renovate a leased facility. This is the part that has changed since previous public hearing. Previously, they had included the building expansion in this grant, and that does not have to happen, so it's just not included in this grant application. They'll also invest in $950,000 of equipment. Once at full capacity, after five years, Project River Breeze will employ 43 full-time employees, paying on average an annual wage of $39,651. The average 2020 Beaufort County wage rate is $38,008. The jobs will include managers, engineers, shift managers, assemblers, and administrative positions. On behalf of Project River Breeze, it's proposed the county apply for $120,000 one NC grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. Through the grant documentation and agreement with Project River Breeze, Beaufort County will not be liable for repayment of this grant. The grant will require the company to achieve its capital investment and job creation goals plus other grant obligations to receive the proposed grant funding. Public benefits derived from the proposed one NC grant will increases in income tax, sales tax, and property tax revenues, plus the creation of 43 new jobs in Beaufort County, North Carolina. I request public comments.
Is anyone here in the public who'd like to speak? Hearing done?
Motion to close the public hearing.
The next item is that I'd like to request to change the assumptions under which Beaufort County will apply for the one NC grant for Project River Breeze to establish a manufacturing grant in Beaufort County. Since we just talked about the project itself, I won't go back into all that, but just to say again that the project has not changed just for this application. They have removed the $1.5 million of building expansion from this grant application. So the project remains the same, it's just for this application, and it's not necessary to put that in the, in the application itself, in the documentation. So I'd ask that the Beaufort County Commissioners approve the staff, the ED staff, the county manager, and the county attorney to apply for $125,000 one NC grant on behalf of Project River Breeze.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I knew that we accept these recommendations.
Is there a second? Discussion? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Yeah, okay, go ahead. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you, Martin. We are down to item N, item for decision. Sheriff, Sheriff Department, I believe, just walked in.
Welcome back.
That was about perfect timing. But I don't have an agenda right in front of me, so actually, what matter is it that we are speaking of right now? Okay. We have several positions within the office that are vacant. We actually have two positions on top of what we sent in for the agenda that are also vacant since that time. I don't know if that's something that can be spoken about and handled tonight, or whether we need to do that next month or not. I don't know on the procedure of that. But the information that you have are vacancies that we have that are not a part of those frozen positions, and we're making a request that they, that we can fill those.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
These are the three positions, the techno, are you, are you talking about the technology specialist, one deputy sheriff, and one administrative assistant, one?
Yes, I believe that's what I sent in on the agenda. And then on top of that, we've got a janitor position that has come vacant in the last couple of weeks, and a front office position.
Well, let's deal with the three that you sent in, and I don't mind dealing with the other two myself tonight, if the rest of the board's in agreement. The technology specialist, that's a vacancy. Who has been in that job?
That is a vacancy as far as position number-wise goes out of the 911 center. But that would be us putting someone in that spot, that would be a reclassification of a telecommunications spot to, to that, to give us a second person to deal with IT stuff throughout the three agencies. But probably their main priority after we get finished with the stuff that's going on at the jail right now, they're probably focused more on the 911 piece than anything else.
But I thought your employee Knox was your technology specialist?
Yes, one out of three different agencies that all have ITs. And where we run into issues with is that Knox is not available 24 hours a day, 365 and one-fourth days out of the year. Every other position that we have within the office, we have at least a one and a two. And quite frankly, there's more stuff for that person to do than there's time for that person to do that, and we need to, we need to get them some more help.
But when I think about a technology specialist, I think about someone, when something won't function, and that person has already tried all of their standard operating procedures to get it going, and it won't get going, and so the specialist comes in and does it, gets it going again. I mean, do you have that many failures in your technology?
That's just, the troubleshooting is, it's a part of the job in all of the functions, but it's just a part of the job. You know, we have a lot of operating systems that we operate under. We've got a computer-aided dispatch system that 911 Center runs off of, that the sheriff's deputy uses as well. That's a computer program, so there's a hardware and a software part of that. There's a jail maintenance system, you know, that we run through out of the jail that is the hardware section, the computer, the cables, everything that's run goes through that, but then we've got the software side of that. And all of those systems that we run on the software side have constant updates and upgrades, and we've got to have folks that can talk with the vendors on the deal. We've got to have folks that can make sure that our computers are talking with each other. And then on the sheriff's side, you know, every vehicle, every control vehicle we have now is really a moving computer, you know? So we've got to have somebody to make sure that the network that we have, which is not just a static network, it's a mobile, dynamic network, we've got to make sure that they're all, all the hardware and software is talking with each other on that. And so there's a, there's a whole lot to it, and it's something that we've been looking to get around to for a long time. It's just now we're starting to see that, you know, short-term, long-term, however you want to, we'll have issues that come up that flare up like the, what's going on trying to get the jail put back together right now, where that has like completely sucked all of Joe's time for the last couple of weeks trying to get camera systems back up, computer systems back up and things like that. So now, if we do have a failure in the 911 center, which does happen often, there was an email that I sent out within the last couple of weeks about one of our monitors, one of the actual consoles busting under warranty, completely out, so we had to come in and network everything back, work with the vendors and get that going, otherwise we would have one less console in the 911.
How many, how many technology specialists do you have now?
Right now, Knox. Right now, we have one.
You have one?
Yes.
Who is going to do the job? If you're upgrading an existing job into a technology specialist, who's going to do that job?
Well, no. So we would be upgrading a telecommunications spot.
Right.
You know, if, if the Commissioners remember, back in last fiscal year, we moved some positions around because of the number of transports that we were having to do while we were out of our jail. Well, that time is coming to an end. So we're going to look to move positions back to the 911 center so we can have at least. So we're going to look to move positions back to the 911 center so we can have at least 16 telecommunicators to fill our shifts, and then that would free up one position. It's not ideal, you know, but I think if nothing else, that should sort of come back as an example of, you know, there's, there's more needs that we have than people to do then, but we try to do our job to make sure that we prioritize and do the jobs that we need with the people that we're allowed by the board. And right now, I remind you that we're five short. You know, I, I can tell you right now, and I raise my hand and testify to the point that we need every one of those positions, but we're five shy without what I'm asking for permission to get tonight.
But.
And without talking about the IT specialists just in general.
If you upgrade this one position, then you're going to have 15 telecommunicators.
Uh, yes. Which is, if we get that full, it's still one or two more than what we've had over the last couple of years because of changes and because people going out and because of openings that we've had.
But with all, with all the mixing around, if you look at the number of people that are on your payroll, you're not increasing the number of people above what was in the budget. Okay?
Yes, that's right. So five short.
If you take, if you take this one job and you make it into, into the technology specialist, then they are, that person, then you're going to have 15 telecommunicators.
In essence, correct. That is correct. You know, but I'll try to reiterate, and I know I'm talking more to you because we're having a conversation with everybody, is that every time we have an open position, we try to evaluate what's the biggest need of all three agencies that we serve. And which means that if, if at the time, the biggest need would be in 911 center, and we've got a deputy sheriff position open, then we're going to look to fill the biggest need at the time. One of the things that we're going to talk about, and I really don't even know when, when that's supposed to be now, would be, we were actually heavy one in the jail. We were at 20 positions. We had 21 filled positions, okay? With the retirement of Lieutenant Ryan, that dropped us down to 20, and that was the level that we wanted to keep that. But with that being said, we were going to use that position and move that to communications as long as it was open, and then the tech, the technology specialist sort of move into that. So, you know, I would be, it would be, untruthful is probably not the word, but it's, it's a Rubik's Cube. We are constantly playing with the Rubik's Cube on trying to maximize what we have and what we can get personnel-wise, and this is a move to get one. We're going to make two or three moves to get there.
You're going to bring a new person into the department to fill this job?
I do not believe, I, I'd be surprised if anyone within our agency has the qualifications that we would be looking for to, to get that.
So you're going.
I'd be surprised.
You're going outside and hire a person?
It, I mean, the plan is to open it. I mean, to put it where we can recruit and, and try to find someone. I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm not flat-out shutting the door and saying that if we've got somebody that is qualified within the house that we wouldn't hire within. I just can't think of any right now that would have the experience, the background, and the educational requirements that we will be looking for to fill it.
So this would be a new employee who's never worked for the county before?
Well, I, I don't know, I don't know if that's going to be the case either.
Well, John, I'll defer to you if you have a question you want to ask, but I want to come back.
Are we handling all this within the existing budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if you're handling it within the existing budget, isn't it, isn't it imperative to hold a position? Do you determine who goes there?
Well, when we passed the budget, we gave them a certain number of positions and a certain number of classifications. And what he's asking for is to reduce his number of telecommunicators and to, to have this new, so he can have this new position. So the total numbers won't change, but he's asking to classify a new position for technology. And frankly, from what I know about technology, I'm, I have a problem with needing more than one person in the sheriff's office to do technology. I just have a problem.
No question.
Stan, go ahead.
Refresh, many, as to why we do not use our IT department for, for the sheriff's needs?
Does the county have an IT department?
Yeah, we have an IT department. In fact, there's an IT person right now filming this meeting. I mean, and I may be wrong on this, but I believe that the county contracts out to vendors. And then they rely on, if I'm not mistaken, personnel that are full-time equivalents out of the three full-time employees that DSS has to do IT work.
Yeah, sure.
Less systems than what we have. I'm not saying they're not important, but if the NC fast goes down for DSS, they can get that fixed timely. But if your 911 center goes down, which is a county mandated function, not a sheriff mandated function, right now, the sheriff is in charge of that because of the history and the decisions made by, between this board and the sheriff. If 911 goes down, then people could die. You know, so it is very important. I'm not saying that other positions are not important, they are. But it doesn't get more, more important than some of the systems that we have. And, and like I said, to my knowledge, you, you can correct me, but to my knowledge, county does not have an IT department.
We've got an IT department. I mean, it might not be sanctioned as such, but they're very capable people over there.
Not saying they're not capable.
Could possibly be easily cross-strained on what your, your, your guys do.
I agree. But at three in the morning, when we get a notification that a 911 console is done, I don't need to have anybody in the county that they don't recognize that they're county IT not coming in immediately to take care of what they need to. And maybe speaking on a term.
But that is a possibility, that we could have somebody from this IT department, maybe beefed up a little bit, that could be on call.
If, if the job gets done, that's what we're looking to do. Now, things in the past that we've relied, I'll, I'll give an example that's right out of our IT, right out of our 911 center. We have been trying to get our mapping system lined up with GIS forever. And we are relying on another county department that that is just a small part of what that person does. And in my opinion, one of the reasons that we are not where we're supposed to be on that is because that person's job is to do 98% of other stuff, and then they give us 2% whenever they can. And therefore, the stuff that we needed to have done for years is still not done.
Yeah, I get that.
You know, so I just say that to go to.
But, but that's.
I'm not saying I'm the smartest person in this room or any other room that I go into, but it's my responsibility to make sure that the tasks and functions that are under the sheriff get done and get done adequately and properly. And the way that we can do that, that I know we can do that, is my fault. If, if there's another plan that needs to come up that we can adequately take care of stuff in a timely manner, then I'm, I'm more than willing to talk about it. But just again, we're talking about, we're looking to fix a problem that we definitely have, and we're looking to fix it within our own, I mean, the budget was just decided in June. We're, we can take care of that with what was decided in June without raising any money, without asking for any more money, and that will take care of a priority issue that we have right now over, of entry-level telecommunications.
Commissioner Richardson?
How many 911 consoles do you have?
We have five 911 consoles.
They're, they're independent?
Four in the main dispatch area, 911 center, and then we have one in the little closet that we have our assistant director in. So we have five at main office. And then we do have capable setup that we can run mobile and set up really anywhere, but in the past, we've set up at the emergency operations center for our folks to do that, like during storms and things like that. And then our backup, our first backup PSAT through mutual aid agreements would be Craven County, and then our currier would be County Attorney.
But you've got five independent consoles?
Yes.
So if one console went down, you don't really need somebody coming at 3:00 in the morning. Actually, you could probably lose three consoles and still function.
If we're talking about consoles, sure, but if we're talking about, you know, a server that's the main line or the relay between one of the telephone companies and the computer, then.
We call the telephone companies what we do on that.
We, we have to diagnose things, and we have to fix them.
Well, describe to me what a typical day of this new employee's going to be.
Um, you know, once again, I think I've really already described it. We've got systems that need to be update, upgraded and maintained. Updates need to be done. There's a schedule of hardware replacement that, that, those are the people that take care of.
But where's their office going to be?
We've got, right now, we've got two people in probably one of our largest office spaces, and right now, the workspace would be, instead of two people in that office space, we would have three.
Their regular workday would be like from nine to five?
We, we do eight to five.
Whatever, that would be.
A lot of times when we do have two people that do that, we may make it where one week the schedule will be eight to five, and then the next week, the schedule would be eight to seven, you know, where it'll be a little bit more coverage in the evenings than like everybody else. And that will give us where, right now, you know, Knox is, if there is any issue that comes up, Knox gets the call. I mean, he could have just worked eight, 10, 12 hours, go home for two or three hours. If there's an issue, then Knox gets the call. Knox gets the call when he's on vacation. Knox gets the call when.
Well, you know, I, I don't know much about technology, but, but I do have an office full of computers. And we don't have those kinds of problems that require somebody to be there, you know, this full-time business. I mean, I, I just can't imagine keeping somebody busy putting out fires nine hours a day, five days a week on, on five consoles. I'm, Charlie, I, I have a problem with this.
You've got five consoles and 911. You have, every deputy has a laptop. You have every deputy, pretty much every employee has a cell phone that's a computer. You've got 70, 70 body cameras. You've got 25 or 30 in-car cameras. You've got, once again, the computers, hardware, software, lines in between in the jail. So you, there's a lot of things. And I've offered the, the invitation to this board several times, several times. I've offered the invitation to you personally when we're out running operations, whether it's drug unit or we're about to go kick in a door when I see you. Say, "How you want to come along?" I put you in the front seat with me. You decline each time. Same thing here. If there's any questions about what an individual does, then let me know, and I'll, I'll sit you with it.
Charlie? Commissioner Langley has a question.
I have a question.
I just make a motion to approve. Do you have a change?
Mr. Chairman, I, what, what changes are we making to motion to approve now? We voting just for the administrative assistant, right? Or not the administrative, the technology specialist?
Technology.
That's it?
Is there a second?
Are you not voting for all three?
I got a question.
No, I've got some more questions about all.
Go ahead. I mean, I, I have a problem with the motion. This is, as Charlie wants to say, this is not changing the FTEs. Because, you know, you say you fire people down. But you cut, that's not the ones that you cut out the budget last year. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So we're not, but we're still not going over these, these that we approved this year budget. Is that correct?
No, we were at 107, and then we froze five positions, so 102. And with what I'm asking for tonight, including the IT reclassification, is going to keep us at 102.
Okay, okay.
Pause your motion.
Okay, I'll change my motion. That's for all three.
And.
Mr. Chairman?
Hang on one second, let me.
That's for the technology specialist, the deputy sheriff, and administrative assistant one.
Mr. Chairman, there are questions.
There are questions to be asked about all these. We should vote on these individually.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Okay, got a second?
There are questions? I have questions.
Go ahead.
On the deputy sheriff, I understand that's somebody that you're just filling a position on. The administrative assistant, is that an existing job? Are we upgrading somebody to that or what?
No, that's an existing position, and we actually have another front office staff that, so two of those I would, I would like to get approval for. Nothing new on that. And I, I think it's, I hope there's not too much discussion. Our, our front office rocks and rolls from the time they're open until the time that they're closed. And each one of the people that works in the front office usually is in charge of at least one program. Like you'll have somebody who answers the phone, deals with whatever comes up in front of them, and then they may be in charge of concealed carry permits and pistol purchase permits. And you have another person who does the civil process, so when they come in, make sure that that, that's all in the computer system, and then they're also in charge of the sex offender registry information. So, so every, we only have five front office positions, including the management over there. And our manager is acting more of a finance officer now than anything else. I mean, she's having to deal with all of the purchase orders and things like that because of the, I mean, they're just, they're, they're too busy. But I can't get them any more help than what we already have at this time, but those two positions are absolutely crucial.
Okay, time to vote. All those in favor?
We're voting on three positions.
Three positions. Raise your right hand. All those opposed?
How'd you vote, Ian? I couldn't say.
Okay, 5-2, motion passes.
And then on that, I was, I guess it's the, for the consideration of the board, whether you guys would hear and vote on the other two that became open after we sent this in for the agenda. Once again, no addition of FTEs.
Is no addition to FTEs?
No additional FTEs, no additional money to be appropriated out of any lines. And that would be for an addition, one additional administrative assistant for the front office, and then the position that was the additional jailer that turned into the technology specialist. So the other one is going to be the bailiff position that we've held open until we can get approval to fill.
Was it in the salary of a jail, a jail, than a technology person?
Oh, well, that, that's actually pretty, pretty substantial, but, but.
I mean, what I'm saying is, is the jailer makes more, doesn't it?
No, no. The, our detention officer would be entry-level. Their, their starting pay would be around the range of.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Subdue.
Second. Discussion?
Can you just be really clear? Just so we have a, and be in one position in charge, you say bailiff or jail?
Yeah, bailiff.
Bailiff.
Yeah. Any more discussion?
Yeah, would you please state the motion and call?
The, the motion is to hire the two that have just been vacated.
Yes.
One of them being the jailer and the other one being, help me.
After the moves that have been made, it's going to be an admin assistant one and then a deputy sheriff, which is going to be a bailiff.
Okay.
That will take you up to your vote, one or two, is that correct?
At this point in time. And I know it's a show game and a lot of movements, but that's the easiest way I can explain everything that's going on.
The, the deputy sheriff will be a bailiff?
The opening that we held, until we can get things sorted out, is a bailiff position.
Okay.
And we, we've had that open for a couple of months when that person decided to transfer to the school, and it was a good fit. So we did that, but we kept that open until we can get approval from the board to use them.
Commissioner Waters?
Yeah, that's good. Got it. I'm not sure you've had a chance to see my request email I sent today.
I haven't.
But will you respond back and copy everybody on the, after everything tonight, the number of positions in the three different areas? During, during the budget process, I wrote down, and I went back and picked it up, in the sheriff's office 60, the jail 24, and 911 18, to come up with the 102.
The 102 is correct, but the divisions will be different. Yes, I will respond to that.
Based on what we done tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Time to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Seven to zero, motion passes.
Once again, I apologize for coming in late when it was my time to speak. Has there been a discussion yet in reference to the statutes involving sheriff's office?
No.
Okay. You, you, on page 20, Commissioner Richardson has a question, right?
Twenty, you asked if a budget amendment was in the consent agenda? Oh, excuse me.
It was in the consent agenda, a budget amendment of $4107, and it's called fitness incentive. incentive. What is a fitness incentive?
So on page 20, if everybody would go to page 20 in their agenda item, thi- this, and it actually starts on page 16. You'll see this is a reporting of year-end reallocations by the finance officer. She is required to do that under the budget ordinance. It is where we move money around under the budget ordinance with, with, the way the budget ordinance is laid out allows us to move money within certain areas. And she has a requirement to report that to you at the year end. We do that to make sure that we don't overspend on any item within the, within the budgets. What this is, on page 20, at the top, it shows fitness incentive. That account number is for the jail. So they are decreasing $4,107 in the jails line item for fitness and reallocating that in $3,000 of it to the sheriff's office in the sheriff's piece, and then $1,107 into communications. So they're simply moving money within the, within the department, within the budgets that are assigned to that department. So there's no additional money. Uh, it is adjustments that, that are made by the finance officer at the end of the year to make sure that you don't overspend in one area.
But the fit-
Now, the question about what the fitness incentive is goes to Chief Rogers.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, what is a fitness incentive?
Uh, the fitness incentive we've had for a good handful of years now actually goes back to the previous administration. Um, you, we have, uh, two pretty decent sized gyms in Washington. The fitness incentive goes to, um, paying the dues for the gym membership. And then, with that being said, then there's a minimum set of requirements as far as time spent and activities at the, at the gym to, to do the employees part. Um, but that, that's pretty much necessary.
And the employees do this while they're on the clock? It's not off the clock?
Some can, some can. Um, we, we try, I mean, it is, you know, physical fitness, um, and all of the, the pluses that go along with it, you know, are a very important part of a lot of jobs. I mean, I, I think it'll be great for the county, for that to be a countywide initiative. Um, but for our folks specifically, we, we require them to be fit enough to do the job that we're asking them to do. Um, and then we do allow, if they can, within their work schedule, to go to the gym and, and spend an hour, um, working out if they can. A lot of times they can't, you know, just because of whether it's investigations or calls or something like that. But also the gyms that we have, we have access to pretty much 24 hours a day. So there's a lot of times that the night shift, if, if calls are not, uh, pushing people all around, then they can send a deputy out of time or two. Um, and, but we've seen just massive benefits. We've seen a decrease in lost time, uh, less sick days, less injuries. Um, and it, it, it's been a really good program for us and for the costs that we do. It's also a good, uh, retention and recruiting tool. Um, and, and we do, um, we use it as that. I mean, that's one of the things, one of the, the spiffs or, or benefits that we do when we're trying to get good people to come work with us.
Okay.
Thank you, Charlie.
I have a, I have a question. Are there any gyms open now?
Um, well, officially, I believe the order came out today from the, from the governor saying that gyms can open back up.
30% capacity.
Okay.
But I didn't know that there were any word up.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'll let y'all discuss that.
There you go. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you. What in the item, oh, items of discussion, Commissioner Richardson?
Uh, jail door report, I think it probably took a lot of those pretty quick, but I do have a question. I didn't get the report. Have prisoners been returned to the jail?
So, so who, what I can tell you? Christine is not here tonight. I told her she probably didn't need to come. Um, so from, from, from the county's perspective on the jail door project, um, there were the DHHS, we are substantially complete on the jail door project. Um, there are some, there are some small punch list items that are still remaining, um, that the contractors come back and take care of. Uh, they did not, um, causing issues with the DHHS inspection. The inspector, uh, the jail inspector and the architect came on Thursday morning. They did a walkthrough. There were two items that they wanted corrected that afternoon. MTS corrected them that afternoon. Um, we received the, um, certificate of occupancy from the city of Washington. We received the fire inspection from the city of Washington. And we received the repopulation order by Judge Sermons. Um, so from our perspective, from the county's perspective, uh, we notified the sheriff's office Friday afternoon, left 2 o'clock, that we were substantially complete. We had received all of the, uh, the approvals uh, from the regulatory agencies, and we were turning that facility back over to them for their operations. So, um, there are a couple of things, like I say, there was a couple of cylinder locks that were keyed, that were supposed to be keyed a certain way and weren't. They've been reordered, and they'll come in and take care of those. Um, Chief Frose may have some different things for you.
Um, the punch list that the manager mentioned, that was something that our folks were working with county maintenance to make sure that that was done. I believe that that, that part of the process is taken care of. Uh, we are in the talks with Pitt County on the transitioning back. Uh, we're not just looking to dump everybody in one load back in, back into the jail. We're looking to sort of, um, I, I believe the, the plan that, um, that Chief Latham had was to do it in thirds for the males, about 15 at a time. Uh, get them into, back into the blocks, make sure everything is running smooth the way that it's supposed to be. Um, but then also so we can have, um, a little bit more isolation with, after the move for COVID purposes. Um, and so we're looking, by the end of this week, we're going to look to have all of the males that we have in Pitt back in-house. And then we're going to stagger the females that are in probably going into next week since we're using the, what's going to be the female block as our isolation block for that quarantine.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie.
When does the contract with Pitt County kick down?
Um, the, Ryan, Ryan should probably give you the official answer. The unofficial answer is I believe Pitt County would love to get our money for as long as they're...
That's what, that's what I thought. I looked at a different price out the deadline this season. I got you.
The, um, the, the contract with Pitt County runs through the end of September.
Okay.
However, uh, we had a 60-day period in which we were at $75. And once we crossed over the 60-day period, which we crossed over Monday, uh, they moved to, it moved to $100 a person per bid. Now, in that agreement, it reads, we had to buy a certain block to start with the 75. The way the agreement, the agreement is written, after we roll over that time period where they start charging us after the 60 days, it says per inmate in the facility. So we're not buying a block at that time.
So if he said it's, it'll be two weeks before it had the last 15 back over, you're right?
Uh, we're looking to have the males here this week, and then that'll leave us right now, I think we have in between eight and 10 females at Pitt.
So you just pay $100 to pay for those eight females?
Which we've been paying $100 a day per female the entire time.
Okay.
So ours, and that was yet another reason why we wanted to make a big move, so we're not staffed in two different places.
Thank you. Going in another direction, I have a, a question. I have read the judge's order, uh, reopening the jail. It's a damning order. The public should be aware of that. Uh, it's setting us up for a lot more trouble down the road, basically, is what it does. But I have a question in here for, I guess, the county attorney or the county manager. The, uh, item four in there says that the undersigned, the judge, shall conduct a hearing to determine whether the jail complies with all DHHS building code and any other requirements of federal, state, and local rules and regulations. Any interested party may appear and be heard as to any revel, relevant evidence or information on the question. So how are we going to be notified?
Richard, my understanding is the judge will issue, I mean, he'll write an order and send us a, uh, and ask us to appear, I assume. Now, in, in reading that order, um, I have some concerns with that order as well, in that if you go back, I think the, the board, you'd requested any information that went to the judge on there. Y'all got that today, yesterday, when did I say yesterday? Um, because he asked for the last 36 months of jail inspection reports. And I said that there, everyone. If you go back to 2018, uh, or if you look at the top of those jail inspection reports, it specifically reads that the jail was built under a certain standard in 1968. It was certain standard for building code, a certain standard for jail at the time. Where grandfathered under that. And that's what they write across the top of it, and then they reference back to that. Um, so if you go back and look in 2018, you'll see one of those jail reports that says, no deficiencies noted. Based on the grandfather of what you were held to at, in 1969 and 1971. Um, now, since that time, we had locking issues. We occasionally had a light bulb that was out that they caught us at the time, or it totally wasn't flushing when they showed up that day. We fixed all those things. So our, our hope is the next time they come, the, the locking mechanism was the biggest. But some of its comments, some of the statements in that order talk about a smoke evacuation system. It's not, that's not part of, it's my understanding that that's not part of what was required in 1969, which is why we're under that. So there are a couple of items in there that I have some concerns over as well. Um, but, but as you know, the judge can write an order however he wants to write an order, and we just argue it, I guess.
Well, your concerns is, are the same as my concerns, and that's why I characterize this order as a damning order, because if somebody gets off of the rails and doesn't understand what's really going on with that jail over there, we can really have some bad judicial decisions. And I don't want to go through that. Uh, and I want to alert the board to the fact that, that, that I'm willing to fight to keep our jail, because we put a lot of money into it, and it is, it is totally in compliance with all of the state regulations. And people can go around and talk all they want to, but it's still in compliance. And I think that we should notice the judge, because he doesn't say in here how he's going to notify anybody. He could have that hearing tomorrow morning with no notice to anybody, according to this order. I think we should notice the judge that we want to be noticed whenever he does that. We want to be able to appear. Well, make that as a motion.
And I'll second. And I guess that applies for the county attorney to do that?
Uh, yes. Listen to a friendly amendment.
My friend, remember that when he had us here, that you be a president?
Oh, I, yeah. I will definitely be there.
Any more discussion? All those, go ahead.
He took my motion. He said he'd be there.
Yeah, I'll be there. Uh, uh, you could, you put that in a motion if you like, that Hood Richardson is to be there. I'll be there.
Second.
I ain't going.
Item number two, Hood.
Sir?
Number two.
Okay. Um, the solid waste workshop. Well, I just want to make a statement on solid waste workshop. I made them up.
So, uh, I want to say this about the solid waste workshop, that I made the motion for the commissioners to have, and then I made the motion to dissolve that particular board at that time. And the reason is, I've been on this board in, in November, I'll be, will have been December rather, I will have been here 24 years. We're having the same conversations right now that we had when I first went on this board. And that is, everybody's sitting around talking. Some commissioners are trying to fix it so their buddies can dump. And, and, and it's, uh, it's not a good thing. It is not a service to the public. The costs keep going up. Some people are paying for other people disposing of other people's garbage. It is not fair at all. And that's why I made the motion to dissolve this. And I will further state that we've got an election coming up in November, and I hope we can elect enough of the right people so that we can fix this instead of continuing to kick the political football around.
Commissioner Waters?
Mr. Chairman, um, one of the things that, uh, Commissioner Richardson didn't state is at the workshop, he made a motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner Detheridge to require all solid waste users to deliver building materials to the republic's location on Flanders Road for weigh-in and payment for disposal. It failed 4 to 2. Uh, and, you know, my, my phone is ringing. I get, I got a call this morning from a gentleman in Aurora that is well-respected. He was at the site in Aurora, and a gentleman, he estimated was 80 to 85 years old, put three or four pieces of, uh, I don't know what it's, two by four or two by six in the container. And the site attendant required that individual to take him out. And he said, he had about six, and he was told. The, the site attendant said, you know, they're going to close this site anyway. In addition to that, the site attendant said, you need to call Frankie. He gave, gave the gentleman my, uh, my telephone number, and I called him back. You know, it, it, it's fine for people like Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Detheridge that live just a matter of a few minutes from Flanders to take their, you know, whatever they take over there. But I've got citizens my way, and we've got citizens in the Aurora way, that are having to go 40 to 50 minutes to the, uh, Flanders site. So I'm going to make a motion that we continue to allow building material to go to three sites. On the south side, it would be Buck Jones. On the north side, it would be River Road and Yatesville. Uh, and I just wrote some guidelines down here. This is not part of the motion, but I think part of the discussion. Is it only county solid waste users that pay the annual fee of $165 per parcel would be eligible? It would exclude roofing material and fencing of any sort. Only single axle trailers would be allowed to use these three locations. No contractor, subcontractor, or commercial business would be permitted to dispose of building materials at any of the county's 10 sites or these three sites here. One other thing that I think we could do that get a handle on it, at least on a temporary basis, is have a separate container off in a separate area clearly marked, building materials only. So that, you know, we've got some way of taking a look at it and measuring it. Uh, it's really unfair to require all of our people to take items all the way to Flanders when they've got just a few items that they cannot dispose of. So, Mr. Chairman, that's my motion, that we have three sites, one on the south side being Buck Jones, one on the north side being River Road, one on the, and also on the north side, uh, Yatesville.
I'll second that motion. Discussion? Commissioner Richardson?
This is the, this, we, Frankie has committed, uh, submitted the age-old question that's been talked about here now for 20-something years. And that is, uh, if somebody rolls up there with a single axle trailer, and they've been remodeling a, a kitchen, and they're a contractor, that, you know, they're, they will roll in there and they will say, this is my personal stuff. This is not contractor stuff, because he and the contractor agreed they were going to do it this way to begin with. It's not fair to the rest of the people what Commissioner Waters has proposed. And I would say the same thing to Commissioner Waters that I said in the meeting. I'm willing to sit here and discuss this stuff for a while, as to how to make this work, providing we do it as an ordinance so that it is enforceable. And, uh, you, you proposed a motion. I don't know whether you proposed an ordinance or what. But if somebody rolls in, I don't think we should take anything in a trailer that's construction debris at one of these places, because you're taking a, a large volume of stuff. It's already loaded up. You can haul it down and get rid of it. Plus, in most bids for construction, the removal of the debris is a part of the contract, and the contractor puts that expense into his, uh, price quote, when he gives a price quote. It's already in there. So the original intent, as has been explained before, of the $165 that we now pay for this, is this is for household waste. This is not for construction debris when you remodel your kitchen, when you remodel your bathroom, when you remodel your house or whatever. How many people do that? How often? And why should part of the people pay for one every, every 300 houses that this happens to? Why should they pay for it? It should be your expense. If you can afford to remodel a kitchen today, I can tell you, you can afford to pay the small fee for disposing of the debris. So I'm not going to vote for it as it is presented, but if you're willing to continue to talk about it, to see if we can hammer this down to something that's going to be fair for everybody and get us where we need to go, I'm on board. fair for everybody and get us where we need to go, I'm on board.
That's why we had, that's why you called for the workshop last time, and then you wouldn't talk about it.
I did talk about it.
No, you stopped, you, you, you motioned that we just abandoned the committee and told them.
Because, because you guys would not talk about the details of my motion, you forced it to a quick vote, and it's the same thing that we've done for 24 years. Now, we're sitting here with the same identical problem, John, and that is, I'm objecting to 200 houses out here having to pay for Joe having his bathroom in his house remodeled and disposing of the construction debris. That is not a household trash issue. And $165 a year doesn't cover it.
Commissioner Waters?
I, I just want the public to understand that when, when I came to that workshop that morning, I realized pretty quick that a backroom deal had been done between two of our commissioners. The motion was made, and the motion was made and seconded very quickly. I'm not even sure the commissioners understood what they were voting on because it happened so fast. Now, you can talk about, you've been a commissioner for 20-some years. The reason is, if you had have been at the workshop, if the public had have been at this workshop, you would see why he has not accomplished nothing on the solid waste in 20-some years. I rest my case.
Time to vote. All those in favor of your motion, raise your, uh, table right.
Can I just ask the board, can you give us some, if this, just in general, if this goes anywhere, you got to give us time to message that, to make sure that people understand it. It just can't happen tomorrow, I hope. Otherwise, we're going to have mass confusion.
Frankie?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I don't recall the commissioners ever voting on changing what we were doing. All of a sudden, people started calling me saying, "When did you stop taking the building material?" I mean, that happened to be, that had to be a telephone call, and Republic passed out letters. I mean, I'm willing to give them a week, but I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready to go ahead and solve this problem and keep people from having to drive to Flanders to get rid of building material.
How much time do you think we need, Brian, to get to, to the public? 30 days?
Well, we didn't advertise in the paper or anything. I mean, it happened just like that, Brian, when we did, when we flipped the switch.
Well... Well, and, and historically, our, our policy, if you look at, if you look at the messaging that the county's had on solid waste, it, it talks about CND is not allowed. CND is supposed to go somewhere else. And small amounts are allowed. Now, that's where the devil is in the details. What's a small amount? What do I consider a small amount? If it goes in your pickup truck, is it small? If it goes, you know? So what has happened, and I think that's what Public Works Director explained to the board was, we have been very, very accommodating over the years. First, with convenient sites, they, they have been, they're very convenient. We got them all over the place. And we have said, okay, well, it used to be you couldn't, you can only bring a single-axle trailer. And then people got upset with the board because they said, "Well, I own a double-axle trailer. Just because I can afford to own one, why can't I use it?" So the board said, "Well, if you will certify to us that that double-axle trailer you have is just your residential waste, then you can use it." So we accommodated that. And then one 2 by 4 became four 2 by 4s, and then four became eight. And, and then when the discussion came back around with the Solid Waste Committee, I think Republic said, "Well, you know, we're really not supposed to be taking that stuff." And we had a lot of contractors who were taking advantage of the situation. And, and it is, it is difficult. It is a tough, tough thing to do unless you say to everyone who comes up there, "Stand on scale and pay for what you throw." People are going to take advantage of it. It's human nature. They're just going to do that, unfortunately. Some folks are going to do the right thing, some folks are never going to do the right thing, unfortunately. And we have to manage to that lowest common denominator sometimes, unfortunately. So Republic was trying to do what they were supposed to do. They were trying to say, "You can't bring a bunch of solid, you can't bring a bunch of construction debris." And maybe that was, maybe that was a little too hard for some folks because over the years, they've been allowed to do that. So that was where our hope with the Solid Waste Committee, we were going to be able to get to a point where we could have some, some good conversation and try to come to a resolution on that. So from staff's perspective, we're looking for as much guidance as we can get because right now, it's kind of the Wild West.
But Brian, it appears to be now that, that the committee has been dissolved, that we're going to have to do everything at a monthly meet. And this is the first thing. Hood can come in next month with something else, or Stan, or any of the other commissioners. This is the first chance that we're having publicly to address the complaints that are out there, and a change that happened without the commissioners actually voting on it. It was discussed in the Solid Waste Committee, but we were accused of doing backroom deals, and that we were going to lie to Republic to come in here and we're going to shut everything else down. You heard two of the speakers tonight, and that's the kind of crap that gets put out there by some of our commissioners.
Well, to speak to that, and we discussed that in the Solid Waste Committee meeting, if the board ever wanted to have a discussion about curbside pickup and modifying things, you had to put a notice out there to say you're going to start that conversation because there's laws relating to haulers that says, if you're going to displace a hauler, you have to give a certain amount of timeframe in there, and you have to notify the hauler so the haulers can come and speak to you and say, "I don't like what you're doing." And then for the board to make a decision, well, how are we going to weigh that out? So that's why the notice was put out there so that, and the haulers were notified to say, "This is what's being contemplated. It's not what's necessarily going to be done, it's what's being talked about. And you have, you have the right to know we're going to talk about that." It's, it's just part of what the statutes say with that regarding haulers. So that's why that was done.
Chairman?
Yep.
I'd like to return to Frankie's motion. I don't have a problem with his motion as he presented it except for a couple of things. I think when you haul a pickup truckload of construction debris, or you load it on a trailer and you haul it to the roll-off, I don't think we should take it there. That's the only thing that I'm saying. If you're willing to amend your motion to say, if it's in a pickup truckload, if you got a few pieces like the manager described, I don't have a problem with that. But if you roll in there with a pickup truckload or a trailer, then I think you got more construction debris than what, what we intended. Because remember, the original intent of this was to take care of household waste. There was nothing said about construction debris in it.
During the workshop, we, we had a discussion about a pickup load. And Brian raised a question. He said, "Well, I don't have a pickup, so if I take a trailer, you know, down there." I mean, I'm looking, you know, if you, if you want me to amend it to say, if you come in with a SUV or a car with a trailer behind it, you know, with three or four pieces. We, we tried to, we tried to get that on the table in the workshop, and in haste, we dissolved it, and we had two motions, and we were out in an hour's time. So we didn't accomplish nothing.
That's right.
Nothing. So we're going to, we're going to vote this thing up or down, and I'm not willing to amend that because I, I, I want, I want this to be hot and center, and this, this group's going to have to make a decision at some point in time. Pay, pay as you go, which means long-term, we're going to have to have a site that's centrally located on both sides of the river with a set of scales. Now, that requires an investment, so I don't anticipate you being in favor of spending any money to put in the set of scales. But I don't think anybody has problems paying if you go in with a big trailer load of stuff. If you've got scales that are somewhere convenient, and they're not convenient when somebody has to drive 45 minutes or 50 minutes to get to a set of scales out here on Flanders Road.
Good?
Okay, well, that being the case, are you willing to table this while we do some more discussion to come to something that we can live with? Because your motion right now agrees to take construction debris by the truckload and the trailer load at the roll-off sites.
I'm not willing to table it because knowing, knowing where we're going, we'll be tabling. We still won't take any actions.
Frankie, did your motion say, did your motion say a truckload of construction debris at those three sites?
It just said that you could bring in a single-axle trailer.
Single axle?
Yes.
Roll-off, or are you talking about the three sites?
Just the three sites.
We would take no construction debris at the other sites?
That's correct.
Well, again, I agree with the manager. He's going to need a while to implement this, and that's something that we need to talk about some more. I'm, I'm willing to, I don't know whether I vote for it or not. I can't make up my mind right now because I see too many implications here, but we do need to keep talking about this and come to a solution.
My other question is, and I don't have a problem with what you're, what you're trying to do. It's, it's a beginning to doing, to doing something, but it's causing a problem in what you're doing. Now, the largest site that you have is on Chair Runway Road and Magnolia School Road. Now, that's going to, that's where you're going to get your confusion at.
There in Ranger?
Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying. And that's true. They're in Ranger, Flanders. But that's where all the confusion is going to come from, and those, and that's only a five-minute drive. But, but when you said, "I'm paying the same $165 that the guy paid on the south side" or whatever. So that's, I mean, that's, that's the only hang-up I have here.
But you are heading them in the right direction.
Yeah, heading them.
You've got to stop dumping it at Magnolia.
Have we stopped the dumping at the other two sites? The, the two sites you just mentioned?
He stopped, he said the three, if he said the three.
No, 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 the big sites. Have they stopped the dumping of construction stuff there?
Probably not.
It, it's been, it's been stopped at every site, all 10.
All 10.
All 10.
I have a question about why can't you take a truckload?
No.
I mean, you're talking about, you can only do trailer but no truck. So what if somebody doesn't own a trailer? I mean, benefiting those that have trailers.
I thought you said truck or trailer.
No.
It's time, it's time to vote. Let's just see if we can get it moving in one direction or the other.
Can we vote, can we vote on this tonight and then take it up again at the next meeting for details and implementation?
This is your Frankie's motion.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm really disappointed. We pay, we, I mean, this delay part is where I'm disappointed. I mean, we pay Republic almost $4 million a year. They've got computers, they've got printers, and, you know, we never had a press release to stop what we were doing in the paper. I mean, it was a flip of the switch. We already have bulk, we already have the bulk containers at 10 sites. I mean, we're not talking about bringing in another one. I mean, they're already there at these three sites. So what do we need a delay for?
Implementation. There's a lot of details.
Implementation. There's a lot of details that goes working this out and making it work if you're going to be bringing construction debris into just three sites. You just can't say everybody show up tomorrow at these three sites with this stuff. The manager's right, that we need to think about this. Otherwise, your phone's going to be ringing, ringing a lot more than it's been ringing. Hood? And here again, with the flip of the switch, when people went to Beach Ridge or they went to Aurora, they didn't have any notice. The attendant says, "You got to take this load to Flanders." I, I, do you not get this? I mean, why do you, why do you need 30 days to implement it?
Just one quick comment. There are bulk sites. There are, we take bulk waste at those sites. There's a difference in bulk and CND. CND would be construction demolition, wood, concrete. You can't put shingles, like you said, shingles are, I guess, long ago in there anyway. But bulk is like my dresser that I throw away, a mattress. So there would be, so it's not, there isn't, there's a difference there. We've, we've not ever supposed to have been taking CND to begin with, and, and they stopped that. And you're right, there was a...
You can, you can go to Beach Ridge, and I invite you to go with me on a Monday morning. We have changed, I don't know how many site attendants we have at Beach Ridge, but on Monday morning, the people on the weekend allow people to bring construction in. If they pull the compactor away, it stays vacant until they bring a new compactor back. In that timeframe, the same deal where they're throwing the sofas and the chairs, they're throwing in building material, and guess what? All of a sudden, they're taking the plastic garbage bags and they're putting it into the bulk. So we're already co-mingling all of that crap.
This is a management problem. This is a management problem, and this is why I say that we need to be talking about this some more at the next meeting so we can get some of the details in this stuff resolved. It's a management problem.
All you have to do, all Christine has to do is call Republic and say, "At these three sites, go back to the way you were doing it." The rest of the sites, just keep doing what you're doing now.
This, this isn't hard implementation.
Because that's me, I can't support this. It doesn't solve the problem. It makes it worse.
I agree, I agree, we still need to work on it.
Yeah, it's time to vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, 5-2, motion passes. Who's going, Brenda Hamilton?
Brenda Hamilton, the manager, do you have anything or chief deputy to report?
There's really nothing new to report. I think at the last meeting, I sent the information that all of the material that we had has been sent to University of Florida, and analysis has already begun. There was a list of questions that went back and forth between our investigators and the staff at University of Florida, lab technicians, things of that nature, to see if we had any ideas on what could be done additionally that has already been done. So that dialogue has taken place, and we've pretty much given them the guidance just like we gave the other labs that have looked at things the guidance, is that, you know, that they're the experts, take what we have, look at what has been done, and if they can think that they can formulate or, or find any other additional information or evidence than to, than to do that. You know, as of, you know, there was an opinion that came out from one of the lab techs that, you know, says from the preliminary look that they look like that all the evidence that they're seeing goes back to domesticated dogs, which is no different than what we had received previously. It doesn't really say anything further to what, you know, what ultimately was the animal that, that did the attack. They agree with our assessment on the dogs that we had in question, saying their, their DNA was there, but their physical appearance at the time of our interaction, it was highly unlikely that they would be the dogs in question. And that's sort of where we are, is that this lab does have the templates for big cats and lions and tigers and bears and all of that other stuff, that they can look at everything. But the main thing is, just from the beginning, is finding the evidence. They've got to find something, find some sort of DNA, and then test it against that, and that's sort of what they're looking into. Some of the comments that, that have been shared, I mean, I'd like to sort of address. This is a slow process. It, it is. It takes time, and it takes time whether it's a human-on-human crime or what, it takes time whenever DNA is being processed. Now, I will say as far as the involvement of the sheriff's offices, that we have been involved in a case unlike we've ever been involved in, longer than we would ever thought that we would be involved in. And our disappointment, or if, if the disappointment of the public or the commissioners is that the sheriff's office hasn't done enough, our disappointment is that the state-level agencies that actually have the word "long life" written on their shoulder patch got out within 48 hours, and we've been in it for the entire time. We've been in contact with Mr. Hamilton just about weekly. Our investigators have, have passed away to his house. He has been in our office, having conversations with our folks and on the, and on the telephone many, many times. So we, we have done our part more than what we probably should be expected to do, but this is a public outcry event, and the sheriff is responding with whatever we can do, then we're going to do. So I appreciate the patience that can, that can be given by the board and the public on this because we're doing everything that we know to do and, and more. And then that's, that's all I have. because we're doing everything that we know to do and, and more. And then that's, that's all I have.
Mr. Richardson, uh, I'm number four.
I'm number four, concerned something came up the last week. Uh, General Statute 153A, uh, one of three addresses, uh, elected officials who have deputies, and that is people who can stand in, in their stead and have the same essential powers and duties that the individual has. For instance, the sheriff can't be everywhere all at one time, and the registrar of deeds is included in this. And she can't do all of the registering of deeds all at one time in, in a lot of counties. So they have deputies to act in their stead. And this particular statute says that these people, the registrar of deeds and the sheriff, have the right to supervise their deputies because they represent them. And so, uh, I, I've never had a disagreement with the statute. The disagreement I have with the statute is all the words that people want to put into the statute that's not there. And that is commissioners can set the number of deputies the sheriff has. They can set the number of deputies that the registrar of deeds has. We can set pay grades. We can set levels in there. And he can select what levels he wants, providing he stays within his budget that we give him for staff. So I don't have a disagreement with this. My disagreement is with people who are telling me that, you know, commissioners are subject to the sheriff. And that is not true, and this statute doesn't say that.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I add a comment?
As everyone is aware, that as government, we have to abide by many different types of laws. There's constitutional law, there's statutory law, there's common law that we still go back from the laws that came from England. And then there's case law. Um, and some of the things that we go, and some of the conversations that have been had between the sheriff's office employees, the sheriff and county officials and school of government and commissioners, uh, things do sort of get muddied. And that's one of those things I've mentioned a couple of times today that it, it irks the sheriff's nerves when I mention it. But when it comes right down to it, about ninety percent of what the sheriff thinks and what Hood thinks are about right. About the ten percent, they, they fight like cats and dogs over. And this is one of those things. So in case law, in 2015, the North Carolina Supreme Court found in Terry Young versus Daniel Bailey, who was the sheriff of Mecklenburg County at the time, and Ohio Casualty Insurance, which was the bond company that they had, um, some more guidance that goes on top of the statute that we're speaking of. So I'll, and I'll forward the, the case to the, to the manager tomorrow. I didn't have time today, so all the commissioners can get it. But on a discretionary review pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 7A 31 of a unanimous decision of the Court of Appeals heard in the Supreme Court on December 7th, 2015. So it's pretty contemporary. I'm gonna try to stick to the highlights. Uh, the matter of the case on April 21st, April, the 21st of April, 2015, Court of Appeals issued an opinion affirming the trial court's ruling in Young versus Bailey that stated that the court says the employees of a county sheriff, including deputies, so the employees of the sheriff, including deputies, are directly employed by the sheriff and not by the county or a county department. Sheriff's employees are not county employees, as defined by the general statute that you mentioned, 153A 99, and are not entitled to the protections of that statute. In the case specifically, in the Mecklenburg case, the sheriff acknowledged that the sheriff's office receives funding and other support from the county in form of salaries, insurance, and so forth, but argued that the funding is not the determining factor, that the mere fact of funding does not establish that a sheriff's office is a department or a program of the county, contending instead that a sheriff's office is independent of county government. The sheriff's opinion that was backed up by the, by the finding was, was that if a North Carolina statute does not apply to the office of the sheriff, then certainly a local county policy does not. Under North Carolina law, each sheriff has the exclusive right to hire, discharge, and supervise the employees of his or her office. While certain county officials have the power to hire and, and fire county employees, setting out powers of county boards of commissioners per se in the same statute, 153A 12-82, listing powers of a county manager, which is in statute. Um, uh, county government lacks hiring, supervisory, and firing authority over deputy sheriffs, which has been mentioned before. The findings of the Supreme Court, in light of the distinct demarcation between county government and the office of the sheriff, include that the sheriff's office is not a program or department of a county and agree with the consistent holdings of the Court of Appeals that a deputy sheriff or employee of a sheriff's office is not a county employee. Furthermore, because the sheriff's office is not a program or a county, or a department of a county, the fact that the sheriff's office receives funds therefore is of no moment, which I actually had to look up and it says, it does not matter. So accordingly, the state constitution mandates popular election. So this is the section of the constitution where the sheriff is established. State constitution mandates popular election of sheriffs, officials who establish procedures, guidelines, priorities, and policies in his or her office. And that's in the Carolina Constitution, Article 7, which Hood has mentioned many times over the years as far as the limitations and what the, what that actually means. And then the election of a particular candidate significat, signifies public support, not just of the candidate, but of that candidate's platform, policies, and ideology. Deputies are a reflection of their sheriff. They serve as the alter egos of the sheriff. And if liability results from the acts of a deputy, the sheriff is held responsible. Therefore, findings of the court also after consider these statutory and, and decisional factors, we conclude by standing in the elected sheriff's shoes, a deputy sheriff fills a role in which loyalty to the elected sheriff is necessary to ensure the sheriff's policies are carried out. And then finally, reclassification. It's mentioned in the case law, it's mentioned as far as, in statutory law, as far as the connection between county commissioners and the sheriff. You set the total FTEs, you set the, the budget, which we've just done in June. Um, the county manager and this budget, which is something that was different than what I've seen before, actually has things down to the functional level. And I look at that as, and going, if there was more control that this board could put on the sheriff and their budget, then you would have. I mean, that's not me saying anything that's negative. It's just being truthful. If y'all could hold us down to the budget line item legally, then they would be wording in the ordinance that I would have said so. So although the county commissioners have the authority over the budget of the sheriff's office and specifically may fix the number of salaried employees within the sheriff's office, the sheriff is the proper person to make decisions regarding the classification of positions within his or her office. The county commissioners have the authority to cease funding for a particular position, but the sheriff retains the ultimate authority to determine who occupies the funded position. And that is not argued. We, we discuss it just about every year. If this board decided to fund the sheriff with two deputies, sheriff has to deal with it. And then you would have to deal with it the next time you run in for office. But that, that's a whole different subject. But that's where it goes where, you know, elections have consequences. And, and that is just where that is. So it's the constant debate. It's the constant working, and that is fine. There is nothing that's been shied away by the sheriff or myself as, as I'm as designated. I just felt that it was the appropriate time, and this was the sheriff's work that I'm just sharing um, with the commissioners on, on the thoughts. And hopefully that would give a little bit more clarification to the issue as it's come up over the last couple of months.
Thank you, Charlie. Hood, school superintendent.
Hey, I move that the board of commissioners request the presence of the school superintendent at the next, uh, commissioners' meeting for the purpose of discussing, uh, his, uh, his expenses and plans for operating the school system.
I'll second that. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, six-one, motion pass.
Did you, what'd you do?
Didn't he already say he was gonna do that? Didn't he respond in the email?
I'm gonna fly to the moon.
You can't use a computer. You ain't gonna get there.
Yeah, use a computer. They ain't use a computer.
I don't know six.
Uh, resolution of course, is that one?
Uh, no, the West School Board President's summary of funds, same one.
Oh, that's the same one. I, I think we solved that problem with he.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Resolution of course.
Okay, but the, uh, courts, one of the things that's happening to us is the state, uh, Supreme Court justice keeps closing the courts and saying that you can't have courts now. I realize they're trying to do some innovative things, uh, with this. But we can't keep the courts closed forever because our jails are gonna truly overflow. And I wanna make a motion that we request the chief justice to open up the courts more than she has opened them so that we can have some trials. We have, uh, in Moonee County jails, we had, I didn't do it this month because there wasn't any point in it. Last month, we had like fifteen or sixteen people that we've had from six months to three years that can't come to trial because of the present rules that the chief justice is operating under. And so I move that we send the Chief Justice, Supreme Court of North Carolina, a letter requesting that she open up trials to the point that, uh, so that we can not overload our jails.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Okay, a discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, four-three, motion passes.
Make sure it's under a resolution.
Um, Stan, Commissioner DeTherich, uh, grant for regional recycling.
Yes, um, I spoke earlier this evening, all of y'all bear witness, to the economic developer. He said he'd give me a call. This is gonna be a, a big idea, uh, initiative. And it's gonna be a lot of moving pieces. It's not gonna get settled anytime soon. Uh, I am started doing some research. I, I want his help. And I'll let you know that I may come to you later with, uh, requests for some grant writing capabilities from someone who does that on a permanent basis. That would not be me. But we as a commissioners would need to point them in the right direction. And, and I don't even know what that direction is yet. I don't think anybody does. What, what has befallen Beaufort County is, uh, happening all over the nation. And, uh, we're gonna have to seek some way to deal with the recycling issue, which is a problem, uh, in, in many areas. There's some larger areas that are figuring some things out, and they're doing it on their own. We don't have that capability. We don't have that kind of money. So we're gonna have to work in a regional construct to make this work. So, uh, I'm just telling you, tonight, I am working on it. There's no need to make a motion. There's no need to vote on anything. And I'm finished.
The, uh, Board of Directors of the Wilkinson Community Event Center in Bellhaven has applied for a USDA grant, uh, to make some repairs. The major part of the, uh, the grant is to replace the sixteen thousand square foot roof. Um, one of the things that the USDA Rule Development, uh, grant requires is a local county commissioner's passing a resolution in support. Uh, does not require any funding by, uh, the county commissioners. And the deadline for this particular application and the reason it's on the agenda is the deadline is September the 21st. So I recommend the, uh, that we send a letter of support, uh, to USDA supporting the Wilkinson Community Event Center USDA grant.
I'll second that. Uh, any discussion?
Do you wanna send it to the USDA or do you wanna send it to Ms. Allen?
I, I guess it probably, what do you think, Brian, should go to, uh, the board of, uh, Wilkinson? So our, our letter would just go to the, uh, Ms. Allen. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Brian. I'm sorry. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven-zero, motion pass. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Hold on.
Have.
I am, I am handling the, um, the monthly financial report, um, in Ms. Reckless's place. She is, uh, out on medical leave. So you have this report in front of you. Uh, this is the sales tax revenue piece. I had to draw your attention. We, we now have June sales in. We received that yesterday. Another report yesterday on that, so it's been entered. Uh, and what I'll tell you is.
No.
Um, what, what I'll tell you is, I, I don't have a clue, uh, as to how this is going. Um, if you will look in June, we collected over a million dollars in sales tax. Um, one million, sixty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars in sales tax. That's a twenty-three percent increase from what it was last year in June. I, I got no clue. Um, that is the highest amount of money we have ever collected in sales tax. I, I came to the county in 2015 and started a spreadsheet looking at our sales tax. It covered the fiscal year fourteen to fifteen. We've never received that much money in sales tax, not even at Christmas. If you will look, that we, we previously, um, in this fiscal year, at Christmas time in December, we collected nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars in sales tax. That was before COVID came around. Um, when we went into, um, the, the sales in March, where we said, well, wow, maybe we're doing some panic buying there, we collected nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. We almost beat Christmas. And then in May, when we were in full shutdown mode, now maybe it was the stimulus checks that got passed out. But we exceeded what we got in Christmas by three, by three thousand dollars. It was nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. In this month, June collections, we were up twenty-three percent, and we collected over a million dollars. Now, the only thing that the association said was, well, maybe that coincides with the May 22nd reopening, where they went into phase two. But I'm telling you, I don't know. I have no idea why the numbers are doing what the numbers are doing.
People are buying big ticket items, boats, cars.
But people are buying, it's humming along. Now, our concern again is, we've projected some stuff, and what we don't want is for it to fall off the cliff this fiscal year because we still got July through December before hopefully things start to tick back up with the vaccine or however they deal with that. Um, so just to tell you, things are really kinda weird. And, uh, I mean, we always have an issue with sales taxes. We don't get the drill down stuff on sales tax. We just get the total piece. Uh, but that's where that stands. What it tells you is that our, when we closed out last fiscal year, we were four point six percent higher than what we were in the prior fiscal year for sales tax. So it was a good year last year, even with a ten percent decrease, um, in, um, in April. Now, again, what we've said is, we need at least until December to see what happens because your sales tax is three months delayed. Um, we got June and September, so it's always three months delayed.
But we made it, we made, based on those assumptions of that decline in sales tax revenue, we made some decisions in the budget process.
That's right. We did.
Okay, and, and so in December, can, are we gonna be able to revisit those decisions?
That is what we would like for you to do. That was our whole intent, was we came to the board and said, we've made some cuts, and we've frozen positions.
Right.
And what we wanna do is see where we are in December and then come back to you. Uh, and see, can we open some things up? So, yes, that's exactly what we. Well, I, I would, I would hope so, simply because I'm still not convinced from July to December, we're not gonna see a downturn.
Well, the good news is that, that we're six point six percent unemployment in this county, which is almost two full points better than the state.
Right.
And almost three points better than the U.S. And we're right, ranking the top ten in, in the lowest unemployment. So we've, we have been very fortunate.
So the next piece you have of this is the water fund. Um, down at the bottom, you see the executive orders that related to the, the waiver of utility penalties, interest, and disconnects. Um, that ended July the 29th. The executive order did require us to give customers a six-month payment plan, uh, for water used during the EO time period. So on the south side, you'll see there were certified letters that were mailed to two hundred and twenty delinquent customers during the week of August the 3rd. Seventy-seven customers paid their bill and are now current, and we have payment plans set up with a hundred and forty-three customers. On the north side, there were five hundred and thirty-eight certified letters that went out. Twenty-eight customers initially signed up for a payment plan. Three hundred and fifty-seven. up for a payment plan. 357 accounts have been automatically enrolled in a payment plan. And today was disconnect day for North Side, who still had a past due balance before the executive order timeframe. And 21 accounts were scheduled today to be disconnected. Now, that was, those were accounts that were delinquent before the executive order kicked in. But when the executive order kicked in, it didn't allow us to go back and get those either. So now the executive order is expired. We can go back and get those. Anybody during the executive order time has to have a six-month time period to pay it back. So that's where that is on the, on the financial side.
Mr. Waters?
Uh, Brian, before the meeting started, John and I were talking about the budget number for the sales tax.
Yes, sir.
And he had it. It was nine million, seven hundred and ten thousand. So we're going to come in $522,000 above the budget.
Yes, we're going to be above budget. That's right. We sure are. We were on track to have a, I mean, we had a good year. We had a really good year. We were 4% above. But we were on track to have even a better year if COVID hadn't gotten to place.
Does she accrue this and then adjust it, the sales tax revenue?
You gotta help.
For last year?
We throw it back. It has to be thrown back to, the auditors throw it back.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so it's going to end, that excess over budget's going to go into?
It will be shown in last year's audit.
Okay.
In that fiscal year's audit. And what we have to do is, that's why we don't close things out until at least September, because we have to throw those numbers back because they were actually fiscal year collections in last fiscal year.
So it'll go into fund balance?
Yeah. All of that stays in that same fiscal year.
Good to move on to the next one.
Next item is the purchase order and project carry forward detail. These are purchase orders that were issued during last fiscal year, 2019, 20, fiscal year 1920. They were obligated by contract to be fulfilled, but they were not delivered, the projects weren't complete by the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, and we have an obligation to roll those forward. So you will see on page 303, the list, general fund items, water district items, solid waste, E911, and then on the drug forfeiture funds. There's an explanation of what the description is, who the vendor is, what the original PO was, what's remaining on the PO, what is liquidated, is what's already been spent out of it, and what the balance was on June 30th, the GL account related to, and what the identification was, like on the very first one, Thompson Price, Scott and Adams. They are our auditors. They are doing the pension audit that we are required to do by the state of North Carolina. Well, the contract for that was $4,950. We've liquidated $3,000, so there's $1,950 left as of June 30th. But that pension audit is only 60% complete, and it's not due until 10/31 or 20th. So we've got to carry those funds forward into the next fiscal year to close out that audit. So that's the list of all this. Some of these, you'll see, the work was completed in July. There were some delays. But that, that is what we've got to bring forward into the fiscal year. So I answer any questions that we may have, but we recommend your approval. Yes, sir.
Sub move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, seven zero.
Mr. President, you voted in favor of that. You voted in favor.
Six one, sorry, Katie. No, okay. Done?
The, the next item is a request by a finance officer for a temporary part-time employee in lieu of filling finance vacancy staff, staff vacancy. The staff account's position you're aware of has been vacant since about mid-June. It was put in, it was one of the positions that was frozen overall in the county. The finance officer did not choose to come back to the board and ask that position to be filled. She distributed that workload amongst other employees, and they've been carrying that load. The issue that we run into now is with the finance officer out on medical leave for an extended amount of time, there's nowhere else to distribute that work. She has had a conversation with Mr. Steve Nobles, who's a CPA and was formerly a finance officer, North Carolina Finance Officer, and he has done some work with us in the past in helping us get caught up on some things. He's agreed to come to workforce on a temporary basis for approximately 12 weeks. That cost us $15,600. According to the finance officer's analysis, the county will realize the savings through December 20th by not hiring that staff position over $37,865. And when you take out the temporary contract there, you'd have, you'd realize the savings of $22,165. Plus, it'll keep us, we've got projects that have to be completed. The finance has to keep going. So she's requesting that you allow us to engage the services of Mr. Nobles under, for a 12-week period in lieu of filling that full-time account position.
Discussion.
That's going to be 12 weeks now. I mean, don't go back 12 weeks and for another extension.
Now, this is, this is.
If she doesn't come back, maybe she would.
Well, that's my understanding. She has approximately 12 weeks and, and.
Now. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes. Okay, Brian?
The next item is the COVID-19 supplies appropriation. You'll see that the county has spent emergency protective measures amounting to about $7,000 so far this fiscal year due to high-traffic cleaning, electric sprayers, additional expenditures are coming that we anticipate in the future for cleaning, personal protective equipment. At the next board meeting, we'll bring back to you the ultraviolet HVAC air filters and a couple of other things that are related to COVID spending and that we believe are reimbursable through FEMA. So what we're asking is a budget amendment that appropriates $100,000 to cover those anticipated expenditures and recognizes the FEMA funds to cover those costs.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes. Thank you, Katie. Okay, Brian?
The next item you have is, this is a request for additional DSS laptops. And I have a quick update on this one. The. DSS is currently, currently uses laptops, and they have many, many computers that are mobile, that are fairly mobile. And what they would like to do, what their plan was, was to ensure that they could have staff that could be uplifted and moved to other places, not only related to COVID, but like during hurricanes. And be able to do that. When we, when we closed to the public, we moved a lot of our DSS folks home. They worked out of their houses, and they were able to do that with those mobile laptops. Originally, they were looking, they were asking for a total of 10 computers or 10 Wi-Fi connections and then 12 or so, I'm sorry, 13 laptops. But what they were notified on Friday was that some of the COVID funds that they had received from the state, that they could use for additional personnel relating to protective services, child protective services and adult protective services, they were given additional COVID money related to that. They were then told that they could use some of that money for IT if they needed to. So they have determined that they can adjust this request. So the request now would be, they're going to use some of that state COVID money that they've been allowed to use. So they are now asking, instead of the original request, they still want to get the 10 MiFi's, which allow them to work remotely, but only five laptops. So that total cost, and on the backside, you have the budget amendment associated with it, that total cost is $14,000, $14,415.20. However, it's reimbursable by the state of North Carolina under DSS at 50%. So the request for county dollars for DSS to have all their folks set up to where they could be mobile if they needed to would be $7,208 in county dollars. So that's what they're requesting that you appropriate that. And essentially, that's fund balance money that we wrapped around by taking COVID money and appropriating it towards salaries.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Got a second? Second. Discussion.
Yeah, got a question. Just did a quick estimation. Yeah, it's like $2,600 per unit. That's a lot of money. And it's just a, is it a pad or?
It's a.
Laptop?
They're laptops.
Okay, says pass. That's a lot for a laptop. Have they gone up that much?
It's still a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. It's like 32 gigs of RAM in that sucker?
I'm looking at from the moving site right here. There's only one hundred.
That's a lot of money.
I mean, they need to look at the details per unit right here.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. That's where I have the $2,600.
Doesn't give you enough detail.
Yeah. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, seven zero, motion passes. Okay, Brian?
Thank you. The next item you have for you is the tax assessor. As you'll recall, just a summary, of course, on June 1st, Mr. Bobby Parker, the current tax assessor, notified the chairman of his intent to retire on December 31. And for those who don't know, plenty of retired Mr. Parker will complete almost 28 years of service with Beaufort County. In addition to that, he served 31 years with the US Department of the Interior Geologic Survey. The position of tax assessor is appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and the board engaged the Services Developmental Associates to recruit candidates and conduct an assessment center. The board then conducted individual interviews with the finalists, and the board selected Mr. Lloyd Salter, who's actually here tonight, for the position. Mr. Salter currently serves as a real property appraisal manager for Mecklenburg County. He anticipates starting with Canada on September the 21st, and that will allow some crossover time with him and Mr. Parker. So there are two pieces out of this. North Carolina General Statute 105, 297 allows the Board of Commissioners, upon the recommendation of the assessor, which Mr. Parker is recommending, that Mr. Salter be appointed an assistant assessor until Mr. Parker's retirement at the end of the year. Then Mr. Salter would be appointed to fill out the remainder of Mr. Parker's appointment as tax assessor. He would be named tax assessor by the board and would fill out the rest of Mr. Parker's appointment, according to the statute. So the recommendation to the board is to formalize the hiring of Mr. Salter into position of tax assessor, grade 40, slightly above midpoint, and appoint Mr. Salter as an assistant assessor until Mr. Parker's retirement on December 31, whereby the board would then appoint Mr. Salter as the tax assessor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. Is there any way we can move up his appointment to assessor?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, gentlemen. Every two years, the, your, your association starts to look for recommendations for legislative goals. And I had not received any through email, and I didn't know if you guys wanted to submit any recommendations at this time.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I have one to present, and that is that we developed some law that, doing essentially what the legislator that was in here earlier says, takes some of the power away from elected officials to do what they've been doing and holding the public down. After all, we do have already, the law is there to do what the governor has seized power to do, and that is any health director can quarantine you for 30 days already. And we need to go back to the system that we've been using before. So I don't, I'm stating this very poorly, but we need to fix the problem that we've got with governor seizing power. Let's put it that way.
Commissioner Waters?
Yep, this is a follow-up on Stan's. Recycling, recycling is a state, you know, problem. And I really think we need to dump that in the lap to try to get some changes because, you know, we can try to do some things here, and I just use the example, you know, I think in their county, they tried to do away with the plastic grocery bags. And I think they passed it and started, and then the state said, no, you can't do that. It's going to require state statutes. So I think, I think we need to put recycling.
We need to call it initiatives for recycling, yeah, because it's not just recycling.
Anyone else? Do you need a motion for that?
On behalf of DSS, they need to fix that Tennessee fast.
Oh, yeah, put that in there. Somebody's brother-in-law got that contract, John.
I understand.
You good?
You got an agreement?
Mr. Francisco?
But you got some property to sell before we do that?
There are two pieces of property. They have a $100 debt amount on each one of them. One's on Old Munch Creek Road. I think their property appears to be landlocked. There is on Devil's Creek Road, there's a .32 acre small lot. And the same lady has put $100 on each one of them. And at this point, they are tied bids.
Second.
Motion is due to go into closed session under NCGS 14331811A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance condition, and appointment of a public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the salary increase for Lieutenant Bron, no, Brian, I mean, Latham, the jail administrator, to swerve to 65, what is it, 60? What was it? Okay, that's, I will say, yeah, I'll say as presented, that's fine.
Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Did you raise your hand? Six one? Did you, are you in? Okay, seven zero, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, on Knox, I'm going to make the recommendation that we, we move him to the minimum in the grade, and then we add a 10% increase in his salary. That would be 50, I'm not sure I got the exact number. It would be 58.
Okay. I'll second that. Any discussion?
No. That's, that's a 10% increase from the, from the bottom of the range, from the base.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, four or three, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we raise chief deputy's salary 10%.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion. I came up with 90,200.
Is that right, Brian? Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero, motion passes. Most to adjourn. Second.